Nine o'clock, we'll call the county board. Meeting to order will begin at the flag pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You want to call the roll, Beth?
Sure. Commissioner Schlangen.
Unexcused.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Heinan.
Excused.
Thank you.
Approve or amend the agenda?
We have no changes.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the amended agenda. All in favor, seeing the vibe is saying aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Adnouncements from the chair. County board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please restrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that the views can be heard. The county board observes the Roberts Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the board's chair consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comments on the agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today's meetings, please turn your cell phones to vibrate. Open forum, anybody back there?
No.
So the consent agenda, we have items one through nine. Anybody wish for any of these to be pulled?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda, items one through nine.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda, items one through nine. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Nadine?
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning. So I come before on the board this morning to ask them to approve a contract with CSG Forte Payment Incorporated so that the county departments can offer credit card services in their very, in the various departments in the county. Credit card processing is an option that several departments have expressed an interest in having to offer to the public for services that they have. I have, Michelle is available here online with us to go over any questions that you guys may have on the contract. As she has reviewed the contract, also I believe Steve is here to address any questions that you may have regarding the IT PCI compliance piece of offering this service throughout the county. I can address any questions you may have also just regarding the vendor and what they will offer to the county. Any?
Questions, or do you want her to go through what they offer?
Did you have any questions on the contract at all?
Not to start out with, I don't.
No.
No? Michelle, do you want to highlight anything with the contract for the board?
You know, it's kind of the standard stuff. They don't have adequate insurance, so at that point you have to assess whether or not that there's a great risk of not having $1.5 million in coverage if there's other providers, or if you think $1 million would be adequate for this. There isn't the ability to terminate the agreement with 30 days' notice, but you could stop offering the service, and they did reduce it to a one-year contract. So that's kind of another item. The other piece would be is that they've limited the liability. They did increase that amount from a three-month fee schedule to 12 months. I believe those were kind of the bigger items that still are made outstanding.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Michelle, are these of concern to your office, or just highlighting them?
We're highlighting them.
Okay.
So I guess one question I would have, so if we do like, Chris does a highway project and it's a huge amount, is that paid with a bank draft, or will we be using credit card for, say, a $3.5 million project?
So this is for customers to be able to pay for services at the counties such as, in Chris's case, a culvert. Somebody wanted to purchase a culvert from the highway department, and they wanted to pay for it with a credit card. They could do that.
Okay.
Permits in Department of Development. Roxanne has various permits that they charge for. That gives the customer the option to pay with cash, of course, check now, or a credit card. So it would be a Master Visa or Discover Card that we will be offering if we approve this contract. So the rate, the fee rate that Forte gave us is 2.35%, which is actually a pretty good fee rate. That, of course, will be passed along to the person, the customer, that uses the card for that charge.
Mr. Chair, Nadine, could you give us an example maybe of what the largest type of purchase would be? I mean, dollar-wise, that you've seen historically?
Well, historically, you know, we haven't offered credit card processing only for property tax payments. So we do have a property tax credit card vendor that we utilize now. And we've had, you know, we've seen 20,000 and, online with a credit card. So the fee with the vendor that we have now is a little bit higher than what Forte would be offering us. So it will save the customers and the residents some money because the rate will be a little lower. So hard to say what the other departments think they would see and...
And again, if I understand, this is a choice. This isn't something we're mandating people to do.
That's right. It's just another, it's another payment option that we're offering the public. Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Nadine, will the other one go away then, now that we're, if this one gets passed?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah. I do have to give a 60-day notification to the current vendor. I haven't done that yet. My plan to roll this out is by department. I have kind of a process in place. I would like the highway and the Department of Development to be the first ones to get rolled out to offer that credit card. And then I'll roll out the rest of the departments from there. I've kind of put our department on the back burner because we currently already have a vendor and it's not broken. So I think we'll sail through tax season with the current vendor before we would switch to the new vendor for the property taxes, so.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, do we have any purchasing fees that we need to do for equipment or anything?
Yep. So, yep, so the credit card point-of-sale terminals are $299. I've tried to negotiate with them on that price to get a better pricing. They're telling me that is the lowest pricing that they can offer. They do have a brand-new terminal that they're going to be providing to us. So with some added security and options on that new terminal. So the terminal that was in your packet is not the latest greatest, so we'll be getting the newest machine that they have available out there for credit card processing, so.
How many are we going to need?
You know, I haven't added the numbers up yet. Each department did fill out a form for me to let me know how many machines they wanted, but I just haven't actually added it up. So, but I'm going to guess probably close to 10 to 12 machines. My department alone, I need four. So I need one at each counter station for my department. So I don't think there were any other departments that needed that number. I think I had the highest number. I believe the sheriff's department wanted two. He left. And I know admin wanted one, Roxanne, you wanted one, highway one. Yeah, so it's probably about 10, 10 or so. Yeah.
I know you vented this pretty well. You've been working on this for a while, so.
Yeah, it's long overdue, so appreciate all the patience that has been given on this project. That contract did take, Michelle spent many hours on that contract going back and forth with the vendor. This vendor does offer their services in many other counties in Minnesota. And we did look at several vendors. This one had the most options to offer us. So, and it's an easy-to-use system, not only for us on our end as far as managing the funds and stuff coming in and reconciling everything, but it's also very customer-user friendly, so.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of the CSG Forte credit card agreement.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the CSG Forte payment. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried.
Go ahead. When you're done, I have one to ask you about something.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Nadine.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. I think when we were putting together this agenda, we made some assurances to Amanda that she could have her EDA meeting first and then get about the rest of her day and not have to sit through all. So what I was hoping we could do is just perhaps recess county board and allow Amanda to do, to have a very short EDA meeting to address the Welsh Place loan. I believe also you have one other item, which later in the agenda, it'd be nice if we could actually address that one too, and then again Amanda could get about the rest of her day. So if we could, perhaps we could just, we could recess county board and then go to the EDA packet which you have.
Okay.
That sound okay?
It's okay with you guys?
Yep. They're winning a parking spot. Yeah. Yeah, we just...
Good morning, Chair.
Morning.
Members of the county commissioners.
We should call your EDA meeting order for it. We have a few items we should go through first right now.
We have a few housekeeping items we have to address. So at this point, I will call the Benton County Economic Development meeting to order. Roll call, Beth?
Commissioner Schlangen.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Heinan.
Approve or amend the agenda? They were in your packet.
I'll move to approve it.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the amended agenda. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried.
Thank you.
Now we need to select a chair and a vice chair.
Typically, that's been the same as the county board chair and vice chair. That's been a past practice.
Oh, it's been a past practice. Well, I see that. The last time we met, I was made chair in October, but I think that had something to do with the elections coming up or something.
I remember the call, exactly, but it seems to keep it simple.
Mr. Chair, if I can, in one motion, I'll move to have yourself serve as chair for EDA and Commissioner Heinan serve as vice chair for the EDA.
And I'll gladly second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Commissioner Pop and Mr. Heinan for chair and vice chair for the 2021 EDA board. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Now we need to approve or amend the minutes from October 20th, 2020.
It's going to be tough for any of us. It is going to be.
Okay, can I make that motion?
Sure you can.
Okay. So I will make the motion to approve the minutes from the October 2020 meeting, seeing that the other ones were not here, but I will need a second on that.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes from October 2020 meetings. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Amanda, consider the modifications to the loan agreement with Welsh Place LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the county commissioners, in your packet, you should have all of the legal documents for the amendment and modification to Welsh Place, their microloan that was approved in 2016. Their original loan was $156,163.63. That was a short-term loan, five-year balloon, amortized out 30 years. But the proceeds at that time were used to remodel their facility in Sauk Rapids. It was a senior living facility. They've been paying on the loan pursuant to the county policy over the past five years, no discrepancies. They're paying currently a 4% interest rate. The final balloon payment was due on September 1st. As good faith measure, they paid their September 1st payment in anticipation that the modification, their two-year extension request would be approved at the EDA meeting this morning. So with that, their new balance that is owing is $114,073.20. So that request, they're just simply extending the loan two years, same interest rate, same terms. Everything stays the same for two years. After that, two years is up, they will have the option of paying that loan off, but they will not have an option to extend it. So we've discussed that with the applicant. They're certainly fine with that. They just need a little bit more time due to some of the recent events that, you know, to extend their loan and make payments. So additionally, that 4% interest, the county would receive that until the loan is paid off in full. That would add an additional $9,711.87 to the fund balance. The applicant is requesting that the application of $125 be removed. I think this is consistent with any other extension that the county board has given. And as far as I understand, the applicant is responsible for paying any legal fees and recording fees associated with the extension request. So the action that I'm asking for this morning is to approve by motion the waiver of the $125 application fee, a two-year extension for Welsh Place, and the authorization to execute the loan documents as included in your packet this morning by the county administrator. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Chair, I'm assuming that the county attorney's office reviewed this contract back in 16?
There was...
I can...
Yeah. Thank you.
Historically, and it goes back a long time, all the loan documents were reviewed by Scott Larsson, attorney with Gray Plant Moody.
Gray Plant Moody, yeah.
Historically, the county had used Scott as an outside attorney to prepare and review all the loan documents. That relationship existed before I started. And I know, I think when Amanda came onboard with, you were comfortable with a different? These had been reviewed by a different outside attorney?
Exactly. So the, yeah, thanks, Monty. So Gray Plant Moody reviewed the initial documents. The amendment of the original documents was reviewed by Kelman Ruder out of Sauk Rapids. And a lot of it has to do with the cost of preparing those loan documents. It was quite expensive to go through Gray Plant Moody.
Are they reviewing for BEP or for the Economic Development Authority through the county?
The Economic Development Authority through the county, but the applicant pays for the cost of those reviews. And I have already reviewed it as well.
So it would be fair to say that our county attorney's office has not reviewed this?
The county, your county attorney has not. But it's typical in economic development to use an attorney that specifies, specializes in economic development.
Mr. Chair, Michelle, I see you're still online with us. Any comment about that at all, or concern?
It is correct that typically the economic development, like loan documents, that is a specialized area. So those have typically been sourced out of house.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? I will, I'll go ahead, Beth.
So they paid off about $42,000 in the last five years?
Roughly.
And so they'll have $114,000 left?
Mm-hmm, correct.
And that's going to be over how many years?
Well, it's a two-year extension, so it balloons in two years. But it's amortized out, you know, in the same capacity as it was before, so 30 years.
So it could be extended again, you're saying?
No.
So it should be paid off by the end of two years?
Correct.
The one thing we'll say is that the loan committee reviewed this and went through it very thoroughly. We met at Falcon Bank, and we got some really expertise people on there that reviewed that quite extensively, and we had a lot of comments in that. And I think when it came down to it, we didn't have a lot of options here to review.
The applicant, yeah.
Yeah, the applicant didn't have a lot of options. And that doesn't put us in a very good position at that point in time. So I think I'm fine with this because of the people that reviewed it and looked at it.
Mr. Chair, I like the fact that they're current for the last five years. So I'll make a motion to waive the $125 fee. I'll make a motion to extend the loan for two years with a balloon payment after that two years and put together the contracts or the loan documents as stated in our packets.
I'll second that. Commissioner Kapinski, are you okay with like one motion including all those and not separate motions?
I'm fine with that if, if Monty is...
Is that clean enough for you?
Yeah.
I'll keep that second then.
Okay, so you heard the, you heard the request and you heard the motion. They're going to combine it into one motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you had something else, well, we got to finish out there. So anything else for this?
No, sir. Nothing else? Just adjourn?
So we'll adjourn the BEP.
And then as you go back to county board, for Amanda's benefit, if you could pick up the final item at 10:15, county administrator, approve a letter of support for the SBDC request. That's Amanda's item, and she'd be wrapped up then.
Yep. Hold on, let's see.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Yep.
Great. So in your packet, you have a letter of support for the Small Business Development Centers grant assistant through the Small Business Partnership Grant Program. This is a competitive grant that's offered through deed. The Small Business Development Center is anticipating applying for this grant. They have requested not only Benton Economic Partnership to support their grant application, but also the county board. I informed that I would be here at the meeting anyway and ask for your support in their grant application. Essentially, the Small Business Partnership Grant Program is a grant to support the startup and growth and success of Minnesota's entrepreneurs and small business owners throughout the delivery of high-quality, free, or low-cost professional business development and technical services. So an example of this would be business planning, you know, filling out applications for assistance through the state, even assisting with putting together, you know, somebody's business plan for a new business that's being proposed in Benton County. Basically, the, if they receive funding through this program, that will help facilitate economic development initiatives and then improve our economic environment to support job growth and then support the economic success of business, county individuals, businesses, and communities by providing opportunities for growth. So it's really a technical assistance grant program that the Small Business Development Center is looking to apply for. So the letter I've drafted for your review, you can certainly change any items on there as you wish. Be open to answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, looking for your approval to support their grant request to...
Questions?
Nope. Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve a letter of support for the Small Business Development Center as presented by BEP.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to support the letter of approval of the Small Business Distribution Assistance. Any other discussion, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Amanda.
And we'll go back to Roxanne.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am actually going to have Mark come up here and give you a briefing on exactly what this item pertains to in relation to the solid waste management plan.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Mark.
So what you have in front of you is a resolution to basically send the solid waste management plan to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for public comment and review. The solid waste management plan is a document we have to update or redo every 10 years. So we've begun that process. We presented it to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. We've had discussions with Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. The document you should have in front of you is the fourth draft, so we've had many discussions. Much of what we are doing is tied to Tri-County because Tri-County does much of the educational, those types of things. So unless you have questions, the request is to basically adopt the resolution to send the plan and all the appendices, including, I should mention, there's something called a goal volume table. And you don't have the appendices in the packet because they were large and just really tough to print, provide that as a written document. The goal volume table is basically a 10-year projection of how we'll handle our waste. Generally, it's garbage versus recycling, those types of things. And that was, it's an estimate, but it's based on past performance. So we did, and I did myself, is took our five-year previous garbage numbers, averaged those out, and then projected. Started with an average and then projected a growth percentage of like 1.2%, if I recall correctly. So that document needs to go into PCE as part of this whole system. So what you're adopting is basically the resolution to send the plan and all the appendices.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mark, if I remember right, if we don't provide this, that affects our SCORE grant money.
Correct. Part of receiving SCORE dollars is you have to have an updated solid waste management.
Yep. Mr. Chair, Mark, just so I'm understanding the timeline correctly, because I was at my first Tri-County meeting a few weeks ago with you. One of the notes I had made from that meeting was that Sherburne is currently at public comment. Benton and Stearns are still in the process. Now this, if we adopt this resolution, moves Benton into the public comment process through MPCA?
Correct. So this basically sends the document to PCA for them to put it out on notice through their process. It still may get kicked back with comments. If there are comments from the public or PCA, we do have to address those. If there are comments, I suspect they'll be pretty minimal because we have had back and forth about four times.
And historically, then, when would you foresee that just being adopted or being done?
I believe their comment period, if I recall, statutory is either 30 or 60 days. I can't off the top of my head. It's, so it'll be probably December would be my guess.
Okay.
We are, to be honest, a little bit behind because, just because they kept commenting. They have new staff looking at these, so new staff tends to be a bit more, they review things closer.
Sure.
Kind of thing, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Are we looking at building a facility in the area, or?
At this point, that it's in the plan as a discussion. If it were to occur, my guess is it would occur somewhere in Stearns County. I don't foresee that. Part of the discussion we're having at Tri-County is actually maybe contract. Currently, we take about half our solid waste, our garbage, to Pope Douglas, which is a solid waste burner. We have a 10-year, basically a 20-year contract that expires in 2031. We're having discussions with them as maybe contracting with them for more long-term solid waste management. But we do have in the plan that it's something, a burner somewhere within Tri-County is still kind of a discussion point.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion...
Mr. Chair, I'll make a mo, make a motion to adopt the resolution to submit to M P C A or for the Benton County Solid Waste Management Plan and authorize Chair to sign.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to submit it and authorize the Chair to sign. Any other discussion?
Ring down, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Thanks, Mark.
Yep, Mark.
Roxanne, Building Inspector.
Okay, so last year, we were in the process of renewing the contract for Inspection Services of Central Minnesota when it was decided that we should explore options and go out for an R F P for those type of services. Through that process, we did end up sticking with Inspection Services under the condition that we would, that I would bring this back in one year for review of those, of the services provided. Since then, I have been, and my staff have been handing out comment cards with building permits, trying to encourage the public to reach out to my office if there are any concerns. With that, we have received one concern and it was from, it was from a local contractor. I'll leave that name out of the record. And they listed about five different concerns. And of that, all five concerns were with the fact that we were enforcing building code. It was very blatant within the email that other municipalities don't enforce the code. Why should we, why, why are we enforcing it? There's a liability there, not only for Inspection Services, but also for the county and for, even for that company, for contractors. There, there's such a liability there in not enforcing the building code. And so we respectfully replied to them, letting them know that David Barzoti and his staff are responsible for enforcing building code. And we do not base our enforcement on other municipalities. But other than that, to date, we have not received any complaints about the staff itself and the handling of any projects. So with that, if the Board is comfortable, I'd like to move forward with our standard three-year contract for inspect, with Inspection Services.
Is that at the same rate or?
Well, that, we'd have to bring that forward.
Bring that forward.
Mm-hmm.
I will have to say that, that, you know, prior to last year when we went out and we looked at different contractors, both from, you know, District One and District Two, there was substantial amount of, of complaints came in. And I don't know what Mr. Barzoti did differently in the last year, if it's being more public friendly or what, what his deal was. But I did not receive a, one call this year on, on his building inspections, on whether it's attitude or timing or, you know.
Sure.
And prior to that, I, I talked to you and I had several complaints.
Sure.
So, I mean, maybe it was probably a good thing we brought it before and make them aware.
Yep.
Of some of the things that were going on, so.
Mr. Chair, and I'm just thinking out loud, where is he at with a potential one-year extension? Do you know, or is that an issue? I, I understand you're recommending a three, comfortable with a three?
That's been our standard is three years.
Has the one-year that, that prior board extended, is that kind of long enough for proof in the pudding? I don't know.
I don't know neither.
I'm just.
You know, part of me says that we were too comfortable in the three-year deal and time, it was, some of it was on a timely fashion when work was getting done and, you know, the complaints weren't so much about what you had just mentioned. It was more about, you know, we're just not friendly and they don't, didn't show up in time and all the other things that, that went with it.
Sure.
So, I mean, it's up to us what our wishes are for this.
Mr. Chair, I, I think anytime you're in a position like this where you gotta enforce codes, you're gonna be in the crosshairs of everybody because they don't like what they hear and, and stuff like that. The other part is, is I, I have checked out Mr. Barzoti with a few other building inspectors in the area and they have clearly said that he is probably one of the best in the area for inspecting. I, I do get your guys' concern on a year versus three. Is there out clauses? If, if all of a sudden we get into a year or, and, and all the complaints start coming back?
Sure, sure. And, and that's something that I will bring forward. So maybe I don't, maybe I take back the whole, renew it for three years because it'll come before you. And we can bring that forward. And if it's something that the Board would like to see as a one-year, a two-year, we can, we can work through that. So more so, I'm just looking forward to move forward with.
Sure.
Looking at that contract and presenting it to you.
Mr. Chair, I guess part of my thinking would be is that we honor whatever changes were made by not going out for other R F Ps and maybe giving a one-year extension and review it again.
Okay.
Just a thought.
I, we went out for other bids.
You know, I know you did.
Yeah, we didn't, just seemed to have a whole lot of them.
And I understand that.
I don't think there, you know, there's an abundance of building inspectors out there.
No.
I understand. So, and that you're just looking for direction, right? Or do we?
Yes, I, I guess I'm looking for whether you wanted to go out for R F Ps again or if you were interested in a contract with Inspection Services.
Mr. Chair, I, I, from my standpoint, I would like to stay with Mr. Barzoti and have you bring back options, one, two and three-year contracts to us instead of going out for R F Ps.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm okay with that. You're just looking for some consensus? We don't need a motion on this.
No, we don't need a motion, just consensus, so.
Okay.
Chair, I have a question. There is still allowance for variances as needed and then they go for code after that.
There's not really variances to building code.
No, I mean, if for a placement or a size or something, negotiating before they start building?
Yes, they can come to our office for variances, yep, and then go through the Board of Adjustments.
Okay, so I think you have direction then?
Yes, yes, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks, Roxanne.
At this time, we'll recess the regular board meeting and turn it over to Human Services. The Chair is not here, so the Vice Chair will have to.
Yeah, but that's Commissioner Slung.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm in charge?
Yeah.
So, okay, so we closed the board meeting and going to the.
You just called the meeting to order.
Okay, call the Human Services meeting to order and.
There you go, right, right there, yep.
Okay, approve or amend the agenda?
No changes.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
So, call the, roll?
Call them, call the question.
Call the question, okay. To vote to approve the agenda.
All those in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Then I'll let you move on with the agenda.
Want to address the consent?
Oh, the, didn't we, oh, then we just did agenda, okay, approve the consent agenda? Any, anybody, any questions or is ready for approval?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items one through three.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? And we'll call for the vote to approve the agenda.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Those in favor?
Those in favor, say.
Aye.
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 Alrighty, it looks like it's my turn.
Oh, it's your turn.
Wanted to give you just a little update or excuse me, a repressor of what we talked about quite some time.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Good morning. All right, my first item is approval to hire a social worker for the homeless population. As you recall, this came before the Board, I believe in late June, early August. And the Board chose to table it for the Octo, or excuse me, the August seventeenth meeting. And I forgot to bring it, so I am now bringing it at this point in time. As this is a county position, I want to ask that we consider hiring for this position right now because we do need to get, get started on some of the things that we have going. So I don't know if you want me to go over and gloss over some of these things on the agenda or if you do recall those things, or if it's simple that you just want to ask me some questions and we call for a vote or?
Mr. Chair or Madam Chair? Bob, for, for me on this one here with the, with the Chair being gone, I myself would rather move it to the next meeting so we can get his input. Obviously, you guys have been in a lot of meetings with the, the Tri-County area and City of St. Cloud in these. So that would just be my, my thought on that.
That would probably have to be October, the first meeting in October then?
No, what about the Septem, second meeting in September?
Is he back by then?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Right.
I was thinking, okay, yeah, we can do that.
Yep, he's back on the nineteenth. I'll make a motion to table that homeless, social worker approval till the nineteenth or what's our next board, twenty-first meeting.
I'll second that.
Any questions? I move that we call the vote to put this up for our next meeting on September twenty-first.
So all those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the second thing on the agenda here is a twenty-twenty-one contract with the Central Minnesota Mental Health Center to provide clinical supervision as required by the statute to social workers providing mental health services. And Sandy has held that role for us for many years. So I'm gonna ask Sandy if she wanted to come up here and talk about that so you can answer any questions.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
As Bob said, I did hold that role as a mental health supervisor. It requires a mental health professional to provide clinical supervision to social workers, provide a mental health services. It's a mandated service. Most counties contract that out rather than have staff in-house because they don't have qualified staff. In some ways, I guess you got lucky with me in that role. However, my new position, it doesn't fit very well with what I currently am doing. So we are looking at contracting that out as other counties do. Any questions?
Madam Chair?
I, are there any questions about the contract?
So this will be an additional cost then, Bob, or Sandy?
Yes, it's an additional cost. We have it in the budget for next year and we do have money this year because our out-of-home placement costs are down. We have plenty of money, so I did check with accounting and we do have money for it this year, but it is an additional cost. We did attempt to hire a mental health professional. We had none apply, so we had no way to fulfill those duties with the current supervisor.
Madam Chair, just so, just so I understood you right, Sandy, so the, you've looked like proposed fifty-five-hundred dollars for this calendar year of the total and that's covered by the excesses that you have already and then the sixteen-five for next year is in your budget?
Correct, actually, we had more than that, we toned it down, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, Sandy, we can always come back to if, if you're, if some of your time frees up and stuff like that in, in years to come, correct?
Correct. It's not likely to happen, but.
I, I want some explanation because I see Bob shaking his head one way and Sandy something else.
I, I think we decided that this was probably not a good idea to spend that time supervising and other supervising duties when the other department, the other units didn't get that same. It just would be awkward for her to pay special attention in her position to a group of people.
It'd be micromanaging in one unit and spending a lot of time with one unit and not equally with the other units is one of the issues.
Can, can you go over the costs one more time? I heard five and sixteen.
Well, what's in here is fifty-five-hundred dollars for the remainder of this calendar year is what I'm seeing. And then sixteen-five per year.
Correct.
Which they've stated in their proposed budget for next year.
I, I personally look at that and say we can't hire somebody for that price, so.
Yeah, right.
And this is a contract, correct?
Correct. So it's Central Minnesota Mental Health Center.
All right.
That's where the most of the surrounding counties have contracted as well.
All right, yeah, I understand that, I think we've talked about that before, right?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, does anybody move to forward the motion?
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll make a motion that we move to a contract with the approval of the Central Mental Health Center to provide clinical supervision.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions? I move that we bring the, this to a vote and.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll get this yet.
Alrighty, the last item we had is we are gonna offer a COVID, a COVID update. So Jacqueline is here, if you would like to have that COVID update.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So as Bob mentioned, I'm just here to provide a brief update regarding COVID in our county. I do want to say the data that I have for you today is as of Friday, September third, before the holiday weekend. So currently, the level of community transmission in Benton County, according to the CDC, seven-day metrics were rated as high. And that's a scale of low, moderate, substantial and high. So we're at the top of the scale there. And we will note, all of our counties in Minnesota are in substantial and high at this point in time. Looking at the vaccination rates, we have seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty-four Benton County residents having received at least one dose of the vaccine for COVID nineteen. That's forty-three point seven percent of our population. This is an increase in our vaccination rate from where we were at near the end of July. We were around forty percent then. So essentially, a hundred, one thousand four hundred and seventy-one more people were vaccinated since the end of July, so that's good. We're continuing to offer vaccine clinics throughout our county. We had two vaccine clinics offered by our public health staff last week. And then we have two more upcoming the week of September twentieth. And we'll continue to post those opportunities on our Benton County Public Health website. We're continuing to see our COVID nineteen cases increase within our county. Within the month of August, our total number was two hundred and forty-four COVID nineteen cases. In comparison, we saw twenty-two in total in the month of June and sixty-eight cases in total in the month of July. But lastly, Benton County Public Health, we've returned to updating our dashboard daily now, Monday through Friday, rather than weekly with the influx of cases and, and we'll have that going Monday through Friday, as I mentioned. So with that, that concludes my update.
Madam Chair, so, you know, you know, we had, pretty much it was a county-wide deal at the Benton County Fair. And granted, there's a lot of Stearns County, but there was a lot of interaction there. Do you think, you know, the last week here had, I know you see it on the St. Cloud Times website. Has there been an inflection of more cases in the last week?
I haven't seen the numbers yet for this week from Friday, they, because of the holiday weekend, M D H isn't posting over the weekend. But I could take a look at that and show you. I know that overall, just looking from the Minnesota Department of Health, I did mention cases linked to various county fairs. They didn't mention any names in, you know, any county.
Any county name, I seen that too.
Yep.
But I mean, that was a large event with a lot of people.
Correct.
On certain days and I would, I would venture that, you know, that might push us into an uptick here.
As well as schools being.
Yeah, well, hopefully we can separate them two out a little bit, you know?
Miss, Madam Chair, when, did, did they come out with a date when they're gonna be doing like twelve and under yet?
So currently, right now, they aren't authorized yet under to do vaccinate twelve and under. However, that's in the works, they've been looking at data and research to see when that might be occurring. There is talk about booster shots and third-dose shots in that administration, but we're still waiting for direction from M D H on how we'll roll that out with local public health. So that should be coming. They did say at least for, under the emergency use authorization, for those twelve and over for booster shots and third dose, that we would be looking at September. for booster shots and third dose, that we would be looking at September 20th, around there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was all I had on the agenda. If there are any other questions, otherwise, I'm done.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
We will close the Human Services meeting.
We'll reconvene regular board meeting and Chris Byrd.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The first item I have for you today is a revisit to an item we talked about a few months ago, and it's an appeal to the county highway access policy, and I will just bring that up now. So in your packet, there should have been the original agenda item, just to kind of refresh everybody. So back in April, it's been several months, the applicant, Jeff Hanson, came before the board asking for an appeal to our access policy. He was wanting to put an additional access onto a parcel, and this violated our current policy in two places. The fact that it was a second access onto a parcel and that he could not meet the access spacing per the classification of the roadway. We were requiring 480-foot access spacing. The issue at the time with that access was that 480 feet would potentially put it in a location where there are wetlands present, and there may be impact to wetlands. At that time, the board asked Mr. Hanson to go have a wetland determination done to see where the actual wetlands are and where there could be an access put that would minimize the impacts to wetlands. I do see that the applicant is here. I also have Roxanne here, since her department handles the wetlands. But what we're here for today is, I think the applicant is requesting to put a driveway in that's about 400 feet from the access to the south, which would be the adjacent owner, a different owner, an access. That still does impact some wetlands. According to what Roxanne's, I don't want to speak for Roxanne, but in her memo here, it looks like it impacts a little over 3,000 square feet of wetlands at that location. I will add, though, in the time since April, there has been a parcel split completed. Is that correct, that process is completed? So when we was applying before, this was one large parcel. There has been a new parcel created that's requesting access to this new parcel, but there has been, in the interim, there has been an easement recorded so that I believe the applicant can continue working on constructing of a new house and gain access to the new parcel from the existing access. So that's a little bit of the background. So once again, the applicant is here today asking the board to consider deviating from the county access policy and grant an access at this location. I'm just trying to scroll through here. I know that there's an image that shows the access. There's an image here that's approximate of where the entrance would be. There's also this one, this is what I was looking for. This one kind of shows the wetlands. So here's the 400-feet spacing from the nearest driveway to the south, putting an access here and then building the driveway kind of in this location.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Chris, is there urgency for it to be dealt with today?
Not from the Highway Department. I don't know if you want to ask the applicant if there's an urgency. We've been dealing with this for a few months, so I know that sometimes at this time of year, though, applicants want to get these in because they start thinking about weather changing and being able to get it in before fall.
I guess what I was looking at is, this is a very, whether it's 80 feet or what, it could affect a lot of things moving forward, because once you grant one variance, it can affect a lot of other people come forward, and I think we should have the full county board on this vote instead of the four of us, and we're missing Commissioner Hyman. What are your guys' thoughts?
I guess I'd like to hear from Roxanne on the wetlands. You know, what it's showing here, if I can remember correctly in our, was it April meeting? That we kind of said we would like that driveway, if nothing else, to deviate straight across from the one on the east side of 78, if that's a possibility or not?
If that's the case, I believe that puts the driveway a little bit farther north than where this drawing is.
Right, that's what I see then.
And you can see, I think this dashed line, oh, I don't want to speak for Roxanne, this is kind of denoting where the wetland impacts would be, maybe?
And it's not, well, those are squares. So, you know, that's not exactly where the wetland is, it's just giving you an idea. It's in that vicinity. I was just going to scroll up and see if we could see the other access. Okay, so rotate.
I think what we were looking at at that time is that we have an access, you know, we'd have one on the east side, and then we'd have one, if they both come out of the same place, kind of alleviate some risk.
Yeah, so it would be a little bit further to the south where they're proposing. Well, here's the access you were talking about.
I can remember conversation you had about that.
Right, which would impact more wetlands if it was moved further to the north. Here is, it's a little bit dark, but you can see that where the dashed line is, there is an existing easement that's recorded to access this property using that existing driveway. So the idea is to allow for it to be constructed where that red line is, impacting a few wetlands. The area is under 5,000 square feet. The technical evaluation panel did review the request, and it was not a delineation, it was a determination, and Mark may be better at explaining the difference, but I believe it's that they didn't actually flag and mark all of the exact wetland boundaries. The preferred method is to avoid any wetlands when possible. However, from my understanding, the TEP cannot deny the request if it's under that 5,000-square-foot threshold. Nope, Mark's going to come up and correct me.
All right, thanks, Mark.
She's correct so far.
All right.
So basically, he requested an access at 400 feet from the existing access, which puts him into wetland impacts, which is what the application was for. The impacts would be allowable under de minimis exemption if he left, if you approved it at 400 feet. If you meet your policy at 480, which puts it pretty much straight across from the driveway you were talking about.
Correct.
That would make more wetland impact. We don't know if that would be exempt at this point, because it could result, he's pretty close at, basically, the exemption would allow him 5,000 square feet, and he'd be at about 3,800 somewhere in that ballpark.
With the current drawing?
With, at 400 feet. However, again, he does have an access he's currently using to build the house with an easement that doesn't fill wetlands, nor bulldoze trees, nor any other issue, and meets your requirements. And that was kind of the discussion that TEP had, although we can't deny an exemption, the preferred method would be to access utilizing existing driveway.
Mr. Chair, if I could, this question I think is for Chris, but don't go too far, Mark. Refresh your memories, or my memory, I guess, in regards to this, the part I'm having a problem with here is policy versus a right-of-way ordinance.
Oh, sure.
And to me, a right-of-way ordinance would explain things a little more clearly and allow an applicant to come before a Board of Adjustment.
It would still be the county board.
Still be, okay.
Yep.
But they could come for an actual variance.
Before the board.
Yeah, not an appeal to a policy. Maybe I'm cutting hairs, but, okay. So can you explain maybe how a right-of-way ordinance would maybe take care of a problem like this if it was in place? I realize it's not today.
For one, right-of-ways or ordinances are usually a little bit more stricter and maybe more descriptive in what the appeal policy is, and maybe a little bit harder to deviate. Ordinances would be a little bit harder to deviate from than policies are. I think policies by nature are a little bit more designed to be flexible. I guess that was my misunderstanding at the beginning, that ordinances would have to go through a Board of Adjustment, but I've been corrected that, yeah, it'd still be the county board would still have to address any deviations but, or variances to the ordinance. Usually, though, when there's variances to the ordinances, there's a findings and orders kind of thing that say, we're granting this variance because of this and this and this because these conditions were present. Policies don't really have those kind of things and stuff, so...
And that kind of attests to Commissioner Pinsky's concern about setting precedents in a subjective policy.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Bob.
The policy does say, though, that property owners can have one access to their property.
Usually, it's one per parcel, but they do already have access, so it's one access to per parcel, I guess is what it says. There's a lot of times that we, if we can, we share access points, because we're looking at it from a roadway safety perspective and trying to minimize the number of access points. So there's a lot of cases in newer developments or newer land splits, we look for opportunities to split the property where the entrance can be shared at the property line. So, yeah, the policy says generally one per parcel, and that's what we were looking at at the beginning, that this is one parcel, and it was violating the policy in two locations. It was adding an additional access point to the existing parcel and could not meet the spacing requirements.
And Chris, you know me, that I've always had trouble when the highway wants to use an access that is dual-purpose, more or less. I don't feel that, I know the crossing to the north, what they're using as an easement right now, and there's heavy equipment, you know, I know they haul manure on that, on the acres that they farm and stuff like that, and I always have problems with that because, you know, people like to have, you like to have a nice driveway, I like to have a nice driveway going into my residential part, so that part doesn't, you know, I really don't like that part when we share easements. If we're sharing between two residents, I'm fine with that, but not when we're sharing with heavy equipment or something like that. And then we have the impact for the wetlands. And where the proposal is now, when you see accesses like that, where one's coming from the right and one's coming from the left, there tends to always be that safety factor in there, I see. You know, I can be going, traveling north on that road, and somebody is coming out, you know, right behind me, and they're sitting at their driveway, and so that becomes a safety factor. I guess I'd like to hear from the applicant if it would be at all possible without, if he could, you know, if we could move it straight across from that access, or if we wish to table it until Commissioner Hyman comes back?
Mr. Chair, just to expand on what you just said, I thought in our last meeting, we did agree that we had to go closer to street across.
I know that was an issue.
What would, I mean, we don't know that that wouldn't work. What would that take to come up with?
So it may and it may not, because again, he's pretty close to exempt. So one thing to just kind of remember or to be aware of is, if you do not qualify for an exemption to the wetland replacement standards, then he's looking at a replacement plan. That can get expensive because that process required, then I'd need to have him do a delineation because we need to know exactly how much impact is. Then he's looking at potentially a replacement plan. Replacement is not cheap. It's, it can be very expensive. So there's, the point of that is there's an additional expense to the applicant to do something like that. But it, we do not know, we know at 480 or at 400, he's meeting the exemption request. At 480, it pushes it further north, which will result in more wetland impacts. Exactly how much that is, it's going to be really close, would be my guess, but I don't know, because he didn't do a delineation, he did a determination, basically, just for the proposal.
But if we, if we went, because right now, you've got about 1,200 square feet difference?
You've got about 3,800.
Yeah, but to get to that 5,000.
Yeah, right.
Yep, so even if it's 20 or, you know, getting it closer to that 480 and keeping within that 5,000 would be my preference.
Right, and if he can do that, that's the issue, is we're not sure that will occur. But if he qualifies for an exemption, we cannot deny him an exemption. And that's what we tried to shoot for, is that, you know, they meet the exemption requirement. But just so you know, if it triggers a replacement plan, that's a different process, and now it costs more, you know, there's additional expenses to the applicant.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
How many feet is it from that one driveway down to the proposed driveway right now?
About 80.
So you mean here to here?
No, the little short spot there. Yeah, that spot.
I do not know.
About 80 feet, probably.
Probably about, yeah, I think you're right, probably about 80 feet.
Because if he put it straight across, that would put him at his, what's required to be at 480 feet.
Yeah. That's just, once again, we're back to the unknown. We don't know how many more feet of wetland, though, that would impact.
Well, if we'd have done the delineation here in August, it wouldn't have been too many.
Mr. Chair?
Thanks, Rob.
Mark, would it make sense that where his entrance comes in there through the county right-of-way, isn't, if you move north, is the right-of-way in the wetland?
It is, yes.
Okay.
It's part of, it was part of the basin to start with, so it would be determined basically part of the basin. What we're not sure of is, did he, did the highway department replace for that when they updated the road?
Okay.
That's a possibility. It's a possible, one, either they did or we determined that it's going to revert to wetland and didn't require that replacement. So generally, in this county, if you do roadwork in the right-of-way ditches, they take on wetland characteristics just because, especially in these kind of areas where it's low to start with, kind of thing, so...
And then hypothetically, if you were to move forward with, let's just say it came in at 5,200 square feet, TEP denies based on that. Does the board have ability to overrule TEP on that?
We do not have an appeal, you couldn't overrule an exemption requirement, you couldn't overrule, well, we do not have a local appeals process, it would go straight to the Board of Water and Soil and Resources, so Bowser would...
Bowser would get in on it, okay.
But you wouldn't have the ability to overrule an exemption. You could potentially a replacement plan decision, but either it is or doesn't kind of thing per statute.
Okay.
What's your wishes here? I mean, we reviewed all the facts, and then are you still, because of the precedence that it's going to set, do we want to have full board?
That would be my preference. I would like to see us, even if we gain 20 feet, and see what that does.
So get closer to the 5,000?
Yeah.
As close as we can.
Yeah. Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, it's just, the reason I'm at 400 is because at the, say, go another 20 feet, then there's a fiber optic connection thing there, so I'm trying to either go right below that or right over that. So I'm okay with that. I guess I do have one question for Mark, is if, if I do get closer and say it is like 5,200 square feet, am I allowed to use 5,000 exemption and mitigate 200?
The replacement is, once you're over, you replace the whole.
Okay, and then...
And that's a statute.
So before construction, would that determination be made, or do we do the construction and then the determination is made?
You'd have to do it before construction.
Determination, okay. Because rough numbers, you got 80 times 12, you know, we're going to be close.
Right.
And I understand if you guys want to table it. I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not being held up, and, number one, I want to get approved, so I'm trying to work with all angles.
And work on the site in the meantime.
Because I am able to work on my...
Right, yeah, but I totally agree with you for not wanting to share that way-north entrance. I'm not in favor of that, just to...
Well, and the distance, it's so much larger.
Yeah, yeah. And we definitely want to promote, you know, the development and tax base in the county too at the same time, so...
Mr. Chair, I'd move to table this to the September 19th? Mr. Chair, I'd moved to table this to the September twenty-first, twenty-first meeting.
Is, um, motion's been made and seconded. Um, any other discussion? Now we'll have discussion from Mark. Would that be enough time to figure out the footage of the required, of where the wetlands would be impacted?
It's kind of up to the applicant. I mean, we react to when they provide.
Okay.
I would think, I could try and if I don't, we'll just push another one.
Okay.
All right, hey, thanks for being workable on that. So motions been made and table it all in favor.
Aye.
Carrie.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, well then we'll move, uh, into the, the next item here. So the next item I have is to award a construction project or award a construction contract for tied projects SAP zero zero five five nine eight dash zero two six and SAP zero zero five five nine eight dash oh two seven. These are bridge replacement projects that we received notification back in July that they would be approved for funding. This is for the replacement of a bridge on County Road fifty-one, just east of Highway twenty-five at the south edge of Foley and then County Road sixty-seven, just north of twenty-three, east of town here. So we opened, uh, bids, uh, back on the twenty-seventh of August. And once again, we were pleasantly surprised to receive seven bids. Um, so, well, that's great. It's, uh, drives up competition and, um, gets people looking at doing work in our county. So, uh, Landwear Construction was the lowest responsible bidder, uh, for both of these tied projects. They did come in over our estimate again, uh, just like, uh, the previous bridge projects that we let back in July, but not as much over our estimate. So I think that helps, uh, Landwear was awarded the construction contract on this previous bridge replacement project. So they know they're going to be in the area. I think that maybe that helped. So with the projects combined, um, they were about six point six percent over our engineer's estimate. Once again, looking at what caused that, uh, additional, uh, price, it comes in, in the price of those precast concrete box culvert sections, which is what we saw in the previous project. Uh, those are just more expensive than they were in the past. I think due to demand, COVID, their pandemic, all those things are playing a part in, in that. Um, so it is my recommendation to award a construction contract to Landwear and authorize the board chair to, to sign the resolution and contracts.
Um, I do see that most of the overrun will be covered by the bridge grant funds anyway.
That is correct. These are bridge grant eligible items, just like in the previous project. They should be covered by that bridge grant that we get from the state, so.
Your wishes?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the contracts for these two projects and, uh, allow the board chair to sign. I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the contracts. Uh, any other discussion?
Quick one, Mr. Chair, Chris, do you expect construction this fall?
No, not on these. Uh, and that's just due to the lead time from the precast yards. Uh, I don't anticipate these to be spring at the earliest.
Okay.
So the culverts may be available in the middle of winter, but I don't think construction would start before the spring.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carrie, thanks, Chris, on that one.
All right, uh, very good. What I'd like to do next is just kind of give a, a little presentation. Uh, this year, we've been very fortunate that our construction projects were able to get started soon, which means they got completed sooner in the year than, than they normally do, which afforded our engineering technicians to do some other work. And one of the things that they worked on this fall, uh, is a culvert entrance inventory. This has been a goal of mine and, uh, my assistance engineers for a number of years is to have this. Um, we just had a long discussion about entrances and stuff. And, and this is something that, uh, we don't know how many entrance culverts that we have in the county that we are responsible for maintaining. A few years ago, I had GIS do a little work and determine the number of parcels that border a county road. And that number exceeded six thousand. And just to do some rough numbers, if every access to, or every parcel that bordered a county road had an access and required a culvert because it crossed a county road ditch, you know, that's over six thousand culverts just on entrances that we'd have to maintain. Now, we have a mix of materials in there, uh, but even just assuming a forty-year life, that's over a hundred and fifty culverts per year that we'd need to be replaced. Our average is about forty year, a forty per year. We need to be replacing three times as many as, as we are. So we've been trying to do an inventory, going out there and surveying them and just try to get a count. Uh, and this is what this, this tool is. This is developed mostly in-house through our GIS specialist, Scott Zwick. And then our engineering technicians go out there and do a little bit of work. So I'm hoping this, this all works live here. But you see all these data points, uh, and, um, it's not inclusive. Mostly what you see is recent construction projects that we've had where we had to go out and do the survey anyways and do the inspection. But the idea is here, we go out there with our GPS equipment and we take a survey. And so we know things like, uh, the elevations of the culverts. And here's an example. So I just clicked on a green dot which represents an entrance. Um, and it tells me here, this dot is a field entrance. It's not a residential entrance. The surface is gravel. We do have four to one in slopes and that's what we try to shoot for on new entrances. Four to one slope is a, a traversable slope with a vehicle. Um, that's when our side slopes on our roads, when we reconstruct roads, we want them to be four to ones or, or flatter. Uh, what that means is a vehicle could traverse over that and not roll. So that's good. Um, looks like we inspected this back in the twenty-ninth of July, uh, at nine thirty-two AM. It's along County Road five. There's some additional data over here. Uh, it tells us it has steel safety grates. Once culverts get over a certain size, the opening size, we require a safety grate. And once again, that is for safety. If it's large enough, uh, a vehicle could potentially get lodged in that, that culvert. So the safety grate is, uh, designed that a vehicle would hit that and travel over the culvert. Uh, it tells us it's a twenty-four inch diameter and the culvert length is forty-four feet long. We also have some additional details in there to tell us, is there debris in there? Um, that needs to be cleaned out. Any other, uh, notes? Like, uh, we see a scour hole in the downstream side that needs, uh, attention. Does it just generally need maintenance? Uh, no. There should be a slot where we can, um, see pictures. A lot of these, we, we try to grab pictures on them. And I'm not seeing that, uh, now on this demonstration, but, um, that is the idea. The idea is to get a count, uh, and start doing things where we manage our, our inventory and anticipate when maintenance is. Right now, we're very reactive in our culvert maintenance. Either it's collapsed or it's plugged, backing up water. And the landowner calls us and say, hey, you need to come look at my culvert and then we respond. If we have an adequate inventory, I'd like to think that we could predict and then therefore budget for when we do maintenance. Say we know, okay, you know, forty years ago was a big year they replaced a lot of culverts. In twenty-twenty-five, that's forty years out, we need to budget to be able to replace a significant number of culverts. Uh, and then try to be proactive versus reactive. The problem is right now, I don't really know how many culverts we have. We talked about the six thousand, that's just on entrances. We know we have thousands and thousands of centerline culverts. And we call them centerline because they cross the centerline of the roadway. Um, that adds a significant number more that we need to replace. So, um, that's just something that we've been able to work on, um, this fall that we don't always get to, to do every year. Uh, it just requires an individual to go out there and actually survey and inspect and record that entrance. My hope is that someday that we have an adequate count and, uh, accurate count of the total number and we can start doing things and be more proactive in our, uh, culvert maintenance.
Mr. Chair, quick question, Chris.
Yeah.
When you say maintenance budget, so is this something that your department would actually maintain and replace? Or do you contract out for some of this?
Both. Uh, so right now, we were doing, we use a lot of contracted, uh, work. Mark Ebner, uh, will, you know, it's, calls already starting to come in probably of culverts that need detention. So he puts together a list and then we contract with local contractors to replace them when we can't get to them. Year, for years and years, it was, uh, our own maintenance forces that were replacing them. Um, now we're, we're trying to use contractors to, to do that work as well. But once again, um, contractors want to know, they want to have a group of culverts to work on as opposed to just picking here and here and there. And then that's more economical, uh, for us as well. If we can group a bunch of culverts and have a contractor work on those.
Is it safe to assume that you're providing the materials and they're providing the labor and equipment?
Correct, because once an entrance is built, it's our responsibility to maintain it for ever after. So yeah, we're providing the, the materials. Um, so once again, the material, the pipe material is coming out of our budget and the cost, uh, to do the work is coming out of our, our budget as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Chris, it may prove a little bit, uh, helpful for everybody when you're doing this to figure out what kind of culvert and put approximate replacement cost at today's value in there.
Hmm.
And, you know, cause what, what would, um, I know there's a wide variety, but what, what would they range from? Was it two hundred to two thousand or?
Oh, to, um.
For replacement.
It's, it's two thousand to probably three thousand, depending on the size and the surface. So, um, you know, residential driveways, if they're blacktopped, you know, that's, uh, adds an additional expense. Field driveways with gravel and there's gravel, uh, adequate gravel there, uh, that's a little bit less expensive. We have seen, uh, culvert material prices jump by a hundred and fifty percent in the last, last year as well. We are using more expensive materials, but they tend to last longer as well, so.
Mr. Chair, Chris, kind of a side note on that, do you still have culverts available to the general public for their own private projects? Uh, for instance, they're putting a drive between two buildings and they need to put a culvert in the ditch. I mean, years ago, you used to be able to come in and buy the culvert, uh, at cost.
Yeah, correct. We, we don't do that anymore.
Okay.
So we sell culverts to individuals when they have a, an entrance permit, uh, with us.
Okay.
So we have local suppliers in our area that, that supply, um, and sell pipe for that purpose. So we're not trying to compete with local, uh, local providers in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, Chris, uh, um, Mr. Chair and I just went through a few numbers on six thousand culverts. At twenty-five hundred dollars a culvert, culvert comes in about fifteen million dollars. Divide that over forty years, that's three hundred and seventy-five grand a year.
That's why we're only able to get forty culverts a year. We need three, we, yeah.
And, and a couple of years ago, we, under the direction of the board, you were to buy, uh, culverts of higher quality so they last longer.
Yeah, so what we're using now is aluminized corrugated steel. What we found is over the years, steel has gotten a little bit thinner, galvanizing is getting a little bit thinner. So you hear the term, oh, the Culvert County's using aluminum pipe. No, what they're actually doing, they're using melted, molten aluminum to coat steel pipe. And, and that's lasting probably twice as long as the galvanized pipe was. So that probably costs a third more than the galvanized, but if it lasts twice as long, we believe we're money ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, and the cost goes back to the taxes on the property owner?
No, well, it's just out of our, our budget. So what's, what we levy for, um, road maintenance, so. Um, on good years, when we have a big reconstruction project, obviously I count those numbers that we replace those pipes as part of a construction project. But, but that's what I'm saying, between construction projects and what our maintenance, by rights, we should be a hundred and fifty per year. And that's for a forty-year life, yeah.
Mr. Chair, thanks, Chris, for the information. I'm going to move to take away your parking spot. Give it to Amanda.
For all the bad news.
Yeah. Okay, one more item for you, Chris?
Yes, uh, yes, it's not happy news either, but, um, it's worth discussing cause bad news doesn't, shouldn't be hidden. So at the end of July, uh, I was notified by BNSF, uh, that, uh, there was a railroad crossing that they need to do work on and halfway crossing at Highway ten. You may be familiar with it. That's our County Road, uh, forty. I'll just bring it up, uh, on a map here. So where our County Road forty crosses Highway ten, there's a railroad crossing there. BNSF needs to upgrade the signals, um, and basically the crossing in general. And so it's expected that the road authority that actually crosses that railroad track participates in the costs. Okay, so how much are the costs? Well, railroad conveniently figured that in for us. Basically, they're saying our participation would be just under sixty thousand. And they said to make everything square, if we just wrote them a check for fifty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars, we'd be good to go. So being a good, uh, county engineer, I asked, what if we didn't, um, do that? And their response was, um, basically that the crossing would continue to degrade. Um, and they would just maintain in a rather low standard, which is what they do not want to do. And we would have to go before MnDOT, uh, to make a determination on who the cost responsibilities are. And they cited a statute that, that references that. And basically, that's where I learned from that statute that, yeah, since we are the road authority that crosses it, uh, we do have a responsibility to participate in those costs. And I don't know how much we want to fight with the railroad on this. They'll, they'll always claim that they were there first and, um, then our road came later, so we need to participate. So it's not something that was included in my budget request because it came in at the end of July and we turned in our budget request at the beginning of July and that's just how things go. They want to do this work in two thousand and twenty-two. Now, to the railroad's benefit, they have a lot more cost because they're going to upgrade the, the crossing arms and the lights and the preemptive signal, whatever, that, that notifies that or activates those. And our costs are basically to participate in the surfacing material that, those big concrete things that go in between the tracks so vehicles can travel over them. So, and that cost comes to just under sixty thousand dollars.
Mr. Chair, is, Chris, is that cost correct?
The only way to compare that is to call a railroad and say, hey, what's the cost for these kinds of things?
But I mean, if it's our area to take care of, can we do it cheaper or not? I mean, they're, they're throwing out a number to you to say this, what, what it costs. I'm just asking, is that the correct cost? Is it forty grand or is it, are they giving us a break and it's sixty grand?
I, I do not know, because to be able to purchase that, we'd have to purchase it from the railroad, so.
Yeah.
Chris, do you know, are they gonna upgrade? I know the crossing and that crossing is really on a large hill. And I know of two incidents where a truck hauling heavy equipment actually got stuck on the tracks.
Yeah, that's something that we're still looking at.
I mean, one was my brother where he virtually had to unhook and get out of Dodge because if a train came, it wasn't going to be pretty.
This is a very difficult location. Um, you're really close to Highway ten here. Um, so you've got some elevation difference you've got to make up in a short amount of time. And that puts that slope steeper than probably what we'd like it to be. Um, yeah, I, I think we're going to have to look at that. We may have to put some things into our patching budget next year to try to smooth things out with, uh, some betumens material and stuff, but.
I guess as long as you're there and, and working on that, I mean, we won't do the work, but, um, probably should be something that should make them aware of.
Yeah, and, and we've talked about that briefly and that, well, it came back quickly. Well, that's, that's the, the road and that's not a railroad issue.
Yeah.
So, um, it's coming back to us to try to fix that, so. We did look at radiuses to see, we did some CAD work, uh, to see if a truck, if this is enough radius. There should be enough radius for a truck to make turns through here. The next thing would be look at that, that elevation, so.
I mean.
Usually they don't change the elevation of their tracks very much when they do this.
Right, they're not going to.
Yeah, so it falls on us, our roadway to match it.
I mean, and then you go down on County seventy-three, that is a high, high traffic road, unbelievable high traffic road.
That's why I don't foresee this crossing ever being closed, because you're right. This is, this is a very high volume road and they're, they're all coming from Lake Country to get to Stearns County, so.
Well, and they, yeah, and they take it, I mean, you'd go there at, at, from four till six in the afternoon and people coming out of St. Cloud going north. It's just, you don't have to go to Rice.
Yeah.
So.
Mr. Chair, you know, Chris, you've got question marks here on source of funds.
Yeah.
So you must be thinking of something.
Uh, well, I mean, cut something else that we were going to do next year, um, and, and do it. So this is, these are local roads, these are county roads, these aren't CASA roads. So it has to come from local sources of funding, so, um, maybe later this year, we'll, we'll look at, see what we've got for wheelage tax or, um, something else, so.
I mean, it looks like something we're going to have to do.
Yeah, it's just, I wish they would have told me at the end of June versus the end of July, so.
I see Mike has got their transportation person here, so maybe he can help us out.
They found that secret pot of money for Benton County.
Mr. Chair, if it's appropriate to have consensus on, we're going to be doing this project, but I, I guess I'd like to see some, what you're thinking of not doing. You know, I mean, as far as replacing the dollars.
Yeah. Okay, I'd have to come back with that.
Sure, yeah, I understand, yeah.
Sure.
Later in the year.
All right, I will do that then.
We need to have a smoothing and safe crossing.
That's right, I think that's what we all want. We want it to be safe, so doing nothing is probably not the right answer.
Okay.
Any other questions for Chris? I just thank Chris.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Um, Samanti, can we move to Micah now?
That's your call.
Okay, yeah, well, I've been sitting here a little while now and probably got. Um, so who's up, who's gonna start?
I believe I need to install Matt's flasher first.
Matt, yeah. For, for those of you that don't know, um, I guess I'm the only one here that was left from last time you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, and just do some opening comments as we're getting the PowerPoint set up. Thank you, Commissioner Pop Matt Mossman, Executive Director of the Minnesota Inter-County Association. Um, thank you to yourself and Commissioner Kapinski for your service on the Micah Board. Um, Micah is fifteen, it's voluntary association. I think most of you know of fifteen of Minnesota's larger counties, not including Hennepin and Ramsey. And so we work closely with partners, but we also find throughout the course of the year, I tend to think of these counties as mostly the suburban counties and most of the regional center and high growth um areas of the state and uh bringing our uh priorities to the legislature on your behalf as part of the policymaking process. And that is a a quite a good setup. Um, thank you. Uh, by Chris, because transportation issues are certainly one of the uh key priorities that we we work on. It all in all was, I think, really a pretty successful legislative session um for counties. I don't have to uh tell all of you that uh uh our state, our country, the and and probably across the globe are in some really interesting times and we are one of the only divided, the only divided party-controlled legislature in the state. And so I think in that we started off a year or so ago with an expected deficit, we uh ended up uh finalizing the legislative budget. Um, certainly got smoothed uh the two-year budget with the uh awareness that we actually had a surplus of one point seven billion dollars at the state government level, plus the federal money that the state received late in session. So as a result of a special session that finished on June thirtieth, um, the legislature did pass a fifty-two point two billion dollar uh two-year budget. And I think that uh all in all, across the board, um, it was very good news uh for counties. We came out well on most fronts and also avoided a number of things that we will um talk about uh going forward. We have a forty-page summary document that if we haven't provided it uh to you, happy to do so. We also have it available electronically. We are not going to cover that forty-page document, but that's just things that impacted county governments um that we followed. But most uh contentious policy issues, I think, did go by the wayside. So I'm just gonna highlight a few things in some of the uh budget uh areas. And then um with me is uh Steve Novak's gonna talk about transportation and Nancy Seleski and Carly Stark. Uh, we will try and uh speed our way through it as best we can uh with the highlights. Uh, one of the things, again, I just want to compliment every county that I come to, um, the great work that you did. We, I felt like we were very successful getting significant amounts of CARES Act dollars from the legislature and the governor last year. And I think because of the good work that counties did throughout the pandemic, both on the public health front and the expenditure of those dollars helping businesses and others, we have a lot of goodwill built up with the legislature that we're trying to leverage and maintain. And I think because of that, even when there was a deficit, there was no conversation about county program aid cuts and other reductions. So we built on that. We did not get a CPA increase. Um, we're gonna kind of look for that next legislative session. Um, I'll talk about that later, but we did get a new uh aid program, the Homeless Prevention Aid Program, a six-year pilot. Not a lot of money for Benton County, but some new permanent money. Um, we expect at the end of six years that hopefully this will continue. This money is distributed based on the number of students in your high schools um that are reporting uh homelessness or displacement throughout the course of the year. So it's a a need-based program. Um, a- also, just a couple of things that your constituents will want to know about uh and yourself, that property taxes for businesses are going down. I think that proportionately will, it will help small businesses more than anything else because more of their value will be excluded from that state general tax um that goes to the state. Um, and then uh in addition, uh veterans in your community will receive higher homeowner and renter refunds because their income from their federal disability will be excluded from the definition of household income and calculating that. So a few things you just might want to know about. Broadband was a significant priority for um and will continue to be uh for Micah. This year, we were pressing for a hundred and twenty million dollars. The bills that went into conference committee got as low as thirty million dollars. Um, we ended up at seventy million dollars over the two years um for uh broadband. Uh, so that is uh hopefully nicely uh placed to um support whatever uh monies might be being used at local levels from ARP bunny uh dollars as well. Um, the last couple of things I just want to point out because I think that they are, they sort of have the potential for intersecting conversations that are going on at the county level for monies that you receive directly from the federal government under the American Rescue Plan dollars. One is frontline worker pay. There was a lot of conversation in the legislature about wanting to retroactively require employers um including local governments, but private sector, public sector employers to retroactively provide up to eighty hours of paid sick leave for anyone defined as an essential worker in the legislation. Um, that would include retail workers, long-term care workers, a number of uh local government uh classes of employees, also um healthcare and hospital industry workers. That legislation did not pass, but the legislature set aside two hundred and fifty million dollars of their federal money for a frontline worker pay program. The recommendations were supposed to be brought forward by a nine-member commission um as of September sixth with the anticipation that a special session would happen here in September, October to pass that legislation. There is not an agreed-upon uh solution yet for how to uh divvy up that two hundred and fifty million dollars. I think part of the crux of it, frankly, is that two hundred and fifty million dollars is not very much when you consider the number of employees, both from the cashiers at retail locations um to long-term care workers and people, nurses and people in the medical industry, manufacturing industries where you were required to go to work and be in person. Um, it goes pretty quickly. So that may still happen. Um, we have, there was also a hundred and fifty million dollars in one-time money for business relief grants, so more money was put into that at the state level. We are following that all closely because the, there's some hope, and Steve will touch on this as well, uh, that a bonding bill could, a supplemental bonding bill could be picked up in that special session if that happens. So those things are a little iffy as of this morning, but you know, maybe tomorrow morning will be uh better news if we keep following those. Any questions? I'll be back up at the end.
Okay, thanks.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Good morning.
Always good to be in Benton County. Glad to be here. Let me just uh go directly to the impacts here on transportation, uh referencing the relatively recently completed special session this summer, but also on a on a continuum, uh reflecting back on the fourth special session last year in October. Combination of those two things has produced a pretty good product for uh county roads and bridges, and I want to bring that to life for you if I can. Uh, getting right to that point, uh, transportation funding highlights. There was fourteen million dollars in local county bridge replacement money that came on top of thirty million that was produced for this purpose last October. Uh, and piggybacking onto that, uh, there was five point five million uh for local uh county road improvements, which came on top of seventy million in October. Just to put it in perspective for you, uh, on a twenty-year timeline, that would be the most significant increase we've had in a calendar year for county roads and bridges. And uh I I think it's fair to say that it's it's meaningful. Uh, and I think, as you know, uh, this money goes uh directly into county road uh and bridge funding through a program administered by by MINDOT with input from counties around the state. So we always have an ongoing list of county roads and bridges ready to go but for the money. And uh as significant as this amount of money is, the number of projects that are still stacked up and coming is also significant, so we'll be continuing to work on that. Uh, something that was uh not new, but significant and its increase also that went along with this is a county like Benton uh has a lot of township roads and a lot of small city streets. And uh the increase in those two categories, twelve million for township roads and eighteen million for small city streets, again, was significant on any kind of a timeline going back twenty years. So the combination of uh county roads and bridges, uh township roads and small city si- uh streets, uh the i- the impact of that uh is a real high point on a twenty-year uh timeframe. So I think we all feel good about that. Uh, the last thing I want to mention in that category of expenditure is because of the pandemic, I think uh everyone's aware uh that a lot of drivers, driver's license bureaus had to uh had to close uh for a variety of uh economic and other reasons. So uh they did put in two point six million dollars each of the next two years uh to completely reopen all of the driver's license exam stations that were closed in two thousand twenty. So that should be of help to uh people throughout the state and I, I think will be quite well received. Let me move on to the next section of uh the bill which allocated a hundred and thirteen million in trunk highway uh funding and thirty-one million in general funds. And that thirty-one million for for general funds pretty much has to be put under the category of earmarks. And uh those that come anywhere near near close uh to my age will remember that used, that used to be commonplace. And then it became unpopular and officially disappeared. And now it's unofficially back. Um, kind of led by the Senate Transportation Chair Newman, who's an interesting person and uh uh has been doing verbal combat with MINDOT now for the last two, three years on this and a few other issues. And out of all that came a a variety of uh earmarks, or as he would call it, constituent requests uh that got funded in this package. One of them came close to you here. Uh, we were just over in Stearns County. And uh they did receive money for the study for uh a section of Highway ten. I think every time Highway ten gets fixed, we all benefit in some way from that over a long stretch of road in Minnesota. And so that's just an example, but there's many others
Steve.
around the state.
How can Highway ten study be in Stearns County and never even touches Stearns County?
It's the magic of uh good representation, I think.
Okay, I mean.
That chunk is insurance.
It gets, it gets you close, and if you want to spin off, you can.
I guess, evidently, because.
Pretty soon, they just adopt it, so.
I think it, closest it comes is about a half a mile, and then from there on, it continues through Benton and Morrison Counties. I mean, it never touches Stearns County.
Well, they're getting the credit for it. So anyway, I just uh want to point out that um this package in total was sig- pretty significant and will have positive impacts in a number of areas. Let me just briefly touch on uh what Matt referenced. Uh, the possibility of a bonding bill that uh could be part of a September or October special session uh which is basically happening to try to put more definition on how this federal money will be spent when it comes to Minnesota. But a, an addition of a bonding bill would be well received by a lot of people. And we would expect that there would be a decent section of uh money in there for local roads and bridges again. And as a result, you know, we're hoping that happens. If it doesn't, of course, next year, twenty twenty-two, it even numbered years, a traditional year for bonding, so we'll be working on bonding on a continuum regardless of the impact of a special session. And then the fourth and sort of final thing, the federal bipartisan infrastructure bill, which you've been reading about a little bit in the newspaper, has now passed the Senate. If it was a straight-up vote, uh, there's the votes to also pass it in the House and make it law, so we are paying attention to it. And it's significant because what we know about it so far uh is Minnesota is going to be one of the states that's going to benefit significantly from that package, particularly in the transportation area. So uh, we will have significant federal money coming to Minnesota for roads, bridges and transit if that bill can become law. And so as a result, we're we're watching it closely. Then the final thing, and uh I got to listen to a little bit of it this morning too, so uh uh, you all know Chris Bir- Bird and you know the importance of him to your county. I just want to point out that uh we also enjoy working with him. Uh, I meet with the engineers every month, year round. And uh we do a variety of projects and uh and of course, Chris is more than a participant, he's a leader. Every Monday morning during the session, we have a call-in around the whole state uh from engineers and others to discuss what's going on step by step in the legislature. And Chris has chaired that group and led that discussion the last couple of years, so uh we really appreciate working with him and uh with that, I will stop and be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Thanks, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm Nancy Seleski, and I represent Micah in the area of Public Health and Human Services, and it's a pleasure to be here with you this morning. It was a really good year at the legislature for public health. I um, nothing like a pandemic, I guess, to get everyone's attention in terms of the importance of public health. I always start with my slide. I think there's seven or eight bullets there, and it looks like, oh, not that much went on. But if you look at the report, it's about twenty pages of, of the forty-page report represents that area. So it's a big part of the of the state budget and county budget, as you know. Uh, so this year, uh, one of the most important things the legislature did is they increased the local public health grant by fifteen million dollars per biennium. And this was, represents about a thirty percent increase. And that has not been increased for quite a number of years, so that was, that was a good success. They also put fifteen million dollars per biennium into a new local public health infrastructure. Eight million dollars into tobacco and vaping prevention, and that's also per biennium. They increased home visiting uh grants by three million dollars per biennium. And one of the other things I just would mention is at one time, there was a proposal to reduce the statewide health improvement program or of ship that did not, um, was not included as part of the package. So again, public health did did well at the legislature. Terms of human services, the legislature also did pass a number of of county priorities in that area as well. One of our priorities was um addressing um as a DHS accounting um glitch that would have transferred to counties about eight point three million dollars. And we were able to get the legislature to pick that up, so the general funded was included in in the final bill there. Also, as you know, we're all doing business in a different way, using technology and in so many different ways. We did go to the legislature with four initiatives um related to to waivers and and wanting to make them permanent. Uh, Representative Dan Wolga-Mott was the author in the House, and then Senator Carla Nelson from Rochester was the Senate champion. Uh, in that uh bill, I would just mention what the, what the four uh waivers were included. It allows uh targeted case management to be performed through telehealth. Also allows min choices reassessments to be done remotely if both the client and um the county, actually, and the provider all agree that it's appropriate um that that happened. Uh, we also modified the housing support absent days, which allows a person to leave their their housing where they're getting support for treatment. Say they're ill with COVID or or some other kind of treatment. Want to make sure that they have a home to return to once they've accomplished that. We also are taking MFIP or allowed to take MFIP uh applications over the phone. And then during the regular uh session that ended in May, there was one other waiver that I just want to mention. And this allows uh counties up to five calendar days to visit with a child that's in the child protection system if that child, if it's deemed that that child is not in any danger in terms of being in contact with the alleged offender. So that passed earlier in the session. Also, the report would reflect that there are dozens of other waivers that were part of the telehealth article of the bill that did pass. The legislature also did put some money and invested in in uh mental health. Um, the Adult Mental Health Initiative grants are increased by one point seven five million dollars per year for the next three years. Adult Mobile Crisis Services, we, they put sixteen million dollars into additional capacity for that. And then there's a new program on dealing, dealing with children's mental health. And what it is, is it's creating a uh transition and support team to facilitate the transition of kids as they're leaving residential facilities, like the one in Wilmer, the the CAPS facility, which is the Child and Adolescent Behavioral Health Hospital. Also want to mention that the legislature did provide rate increases for employees working in ICFDD facilities for PCAs and other home healthcare workers as well. Unfortunately, we did pick up one county cost share, and again, this relates to the Wilmer facility, the CAPS facility there. When a child is deemed to not leave that level, need that level of uh hospitalization any longer and and there's not a bed for that child, um, counties are on the hook um until that other placement is made. And that's like a shift. And that's a shift to the counties of about $2.4 million per biennium on a statewide basis. So that was one of the one thing that we did pick up, unfortunately. Also want to mention that they did come to an agreement on the eviction moratorium. People cannot be evicted until it's October. It was three months after the signing signing of the bill unless there's a material violation of the lease, which would mean non it doesn't relate to the nonpayment of rent, but maybe destruction of property, et cetera, then that person can can be evicted. Also, there's language that requires landlords to provide 15 days notice before they start an eviction process. This off-ramp was intended to drive Minnesotans to the state website to apply for nearly $700 million of federal funds that we that we have. Again, it's to help not only the renters that have fallen behind on their rent, but also to hold the landlords keep the landlords whole as well. Just want to mention a couple of things that did not happen. We had worked on language relating to substance use disorder reform. The Senate did pick up our our language. Unfortunately, the House didn't. What it would have done is it would have created a allowed us to to bill medical assistance for pre-treatment coordination. And unfortunately, again, this did not pass the in the House, so that was not part of the proposal. We have had ongoing conversations about every couple of weeks, we talk with or about once a month, I would say, with the direct care and treatment team at DHS. So we're continuing to have conversations on that. Also, there was three proposals for cost shifts to counties that were averted. I'll just give you a quick heads up on what they were. One would have capped capped the disability waiver allocations. One would have frozen Min Choices reimbursement at 2019 levels, so basically a block grant for Min Choices. And the third would have put a cost share on counties for placements of disabled individuals ages 18 to 27 in certain settings. Those all did not happen. So that was the good news there. With that, I just want to close by also recognizing a couple of your staff members. I work very closely with Bob Cornelius, and he's he's very active in MICA. And I'm getting to know your new Public Health Director, Jaclyn Litvin, as well. So just want to mention that they represent not only your county very well, but the county, 87 counties as a whole.
Thank you.
Questions? Comments?
Thank you for what you do. Your reports are always very thorough.
He's a little bit involved, right?
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board Members. I'm Carly Stark, and I cover public safety for MICA. So I'm first going to correct a mistake that I made on the PowerPoint. There on the, I think, fifth bullet down, it says there was $500,000 for grant to local law enforcement for body cams. Unfortunately, I missed that between the second to last and last bill that that was taken out. So there is no money for that this year. However, I do think that is going to be a topic of conversation going forward. The good news is that was there was an increase in the Community Corrections Act subsidy and county probation officer reimbursement amount over the biennium in one-time funding. And that does affect the amount that DOC contracts cost, which because I believe Benton is a DOC contract county. So that should benefit you. Another thing that passed was a community supervision study group to talk about probation funding and how to ensure that the funding of community corrections is more equitable from county to county. In that group, I am trying to ensure that counties keep their ability to choose what system works for them, and also ensure that the state is covering core probation services for every county throughout the state. So then counties can invest above that amount if they want to do innovative programming. The 911 telecommunications fee was decreased from 95 cents to 80 cents. However, the state did double the amount that goes to public safety answering points, which means there's more money for the expensive equipment and dispatch centers, which keeps the 911 system moving well. There was unfortunately no money for direct money for emergency management readiness grants. That's been a priority of, I think, MICA and AMC and the Association of Minnesota Emergency Managers for a number of years. This year, I think it got pretty far, but it did not cross the finish line, probably due to the large amounts of federal funding that have been going towards emergency management services. So we'll skip over that that mistake I made to the $500,000 for a matching grant to counties for court security updates. This was a grant that in 2018, I believe, they had the same grant. So it's the state gives you half of the amount to update your courthouses with body not body cams, x-ray machines, metal detectors, and other security features, because there are still a lot throughout the counties that that don't have some of those important safety features. The last one is something that did not pass in the original form, which was a good thing. It was a bill that requires judges to order a neuropsychological exam, which costs about $4,500 average to counties for any criminal case where the defendant has a traumatic brain injury, history of stroke, or fetal alcohol syndrome. So that would have cost a substantial amount for counties. They changed it to a feasibility study to talk about the cost and to figure out if it's actually feasible, because there aren't a lot of people who can actually administer those exams throughout the state. So I am hoping to encourage them strongly to find a different funding source besides just making counties pay for it, because, again, it's about an $8 million cost to counties throughout the state. And that's all I have. I am available to answer questions if you have any.
Sure.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thanks for the good job.
Thank you.
Well, this is truly just the ore in the water. But in the interest of time, I will expedite forward. We also cover some general government items and environment where there are priorities, particularly for our counties. We were successful at getting $700,000 more each year for SCORE grants. Much more is needed there. This is just a growing challenge for counties as solid waste streams are outstripping the recycling and the and the facilities available to process that. Money was put in to that point. Our closed landfills now are increasingly having groundwater challenges with PFAS and other chemicals. Money was put into that, and I assume that that will become a continuing challenge. There was money put in in two different programs that supports especially at the intersection of rural and urban areas, like this central part of the state for replacement of septic systems. We avoided on that second big bullet point down there, we avoided a effort to require all counties to impose a new conservation or a new mortgage transaction fee that would have then funded soil and water conservation districts. Those districts will continue to be funded for another two years out of the Clean Water Fund. And there was some increased money put into aquatic invasive species for counties and lake associations. So we are actively working now. Open any suggestions you have now directly. It's a it's a pleasure to work. Monty always has a good input is to our work as well. So any ideas you have as we now look forward to the 2022 session. A lot of study groups that we're looking at. I mentioned sort of obliquely earlier, but it's it's my sense that I'll work with all of you on the on the board commissioners. But I really think that we should make a push for increased county program aid this next legislative session. So I'll be talking to you about that more. The allocation of the remaining federal money at the state level will be a big issue, of course, as will redistricting and a bonding bill and some other things in 2022. So and a healthy state budget condition, we expect for next legislative session. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? I guess I got one. It seems like every year, the SWCDs come back for, you know, like taxing authority or whatever. And I worked with I worked with SWCDs, and I was on the AMC when they tried the first go-around on that. It seems like the counties that that the county board and the SWCD don't have a great relationship are the counties that are driving this every year. And now I understand we got at least one state legislature that was a former SWCD director, and they keep pushing it every year, and you get tired of them going back. I mean, our SWCD is not looking at funding because we fund them well, and they do a great job with grants and that. You know, and I know it takes some of your time every time it comes up to make sure that it don't. And I think the MICA counties are the ones that are pretty well-funded and have the great relationships with SWCDs. So I commend you for working for that. And the other part, on your update for tomorrow's meeting, you you had that we have a growing number of state legislators and senators that are already saying they're not seeking reelection. Do you have any idea how many that number is?
I actually don't know what the number is, but I'll try and have that by tomorrow. But it is it is a growing number.
Okay. And then that leads me to my other comment is that we have scheduled a soil and water tour tomorrow. So I don't know if Commissioner, but Cominsky and myself will be able to be at the MICA meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
We scheduled it way back in May, parlay or whatever. And then you got we moved the MICA meeting to the eighth, so.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that. I will get back to you either way on the question and where we have additional information. Happy to follow up.
I don't know if we're going to be able to get online or or what we're going to try and do here. We'll figure out something between the two of us.
Good. Thank you.
But thank for the great job. I think MICA's got a lot of value from our county standpoint.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate your membership. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Same question.
Yep. We'll take a two-minute break here.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, good morning. As Monty mentioned, I'm Jessica with Northland. I believe we spoke over the winter months, probably about March or so, about the topic that's before you today. So we do have a resolution for your consideration providing for the competitive negotiated sale of the Series 2021A bonds. This would be used to refund this county's outstanding 2014A series of bonds. I believe this starts around page 225 in your packet, but you have a finance plan that's before you. And all of the information in here is based on estimated information, including interest rates, et cetera. So if you go to page one, following the table of contents, we've got the executive summary listed here for you. So again, the purpose of issuing the Series 2021A bonds would be to refund the Series 2014A bonds. And we would be doing this for interest rate savings. So not looking to extend or shorten the maturity at all, just really taking what exists today and mirroring that exact structure. So the repayment would still remain out to 2030. We've got an estimated savings here of around $222,000. The board may recall when we looked at this back in March, we had talked about doing that as an advance refunding at the time, which would have necessitated the issuance of taxable bonds. At that point, we were looking at savings of around $141,000. And then we'd also done some analysis based on, okay, if we did this as taxable now, here's where we estimate to be at in terms of savings. And then we did a couple of different scenarios, assuming that there were some changes in the market rate, or what would happen if we waited until the bonds were considered a current refunding, where we could do it on a tax-exempt basis. And at that time, the board said, let's wait and see what's going to happen. And for all intents and purposes, it certainly does look like that was a good decision. Rates are still very, very low. And again, when we were looking at that as a taxable, it was around 141, and now we're sitting at about 222. And we won't know exactly what that savings is until we actually sell the bonds, assuming that the board wants to move forward with that. But we would do that in about a month's time. So we just keep our fingers crossed that rates hold in the low position that they are now. In terms of the present value basis of the savings, that's around $214,000. And what that means is if someone were to give you a check for that savings today, that's what that 222 would translate to. Overall, on a percentage basis, we're looking at 7.86% in total savings. And usually, that threshold of when when do you or don't you want to move forward with a refund, and we want to see at least 3% savings. So seeing that inch up towards 8% is a nice figure to see. Average coupon, what we're anticipating is .82. And then the true interest cost is .98, again, based on the estimated rates that we that we know today. You do have a prepayment option, meaning that you can call the bonds in. This would be February 1 of 2029. So you wouldn't be able to call in a large amount of bonds at that point. But certainly, if you wanted to call them in, then you'd have that option. We are looking to schedule a rating review for this issue based on the county's current general obligation debt being rated Double A. We would imagine that rating to be affirmed, assuming that there hasn't been any major changes to your financial position. So we will likely be holding that call, I believe, next week. And then we'll, of course, move forward with the sale of bonds, again, if the board is supportive of that. The bonds would be considered tax-exempt and bank-qualified, and we'd be looking to hold a public sale. So we would receive bids on behalf of the county. We would plan to do that on Monday, October 4. That would occur at 11:00 AM. We'd be in contact with staff about the results at that time, then come back before you the following morning at your board meeting that's scheduled for that Tuesday. You've got a good amount of detail in this plan, and I know that this has been a longer meeting for the board, so I'll try to get through this quickly. You have the sources and uses at the very top. Of course, the paramount of bonds here being 2,520. You've got your underwriters discount, which we are assuming to be right around 20,000. Total cost of issuance is currently estimated to be 46,500, which would allow you to call in the bonds, which have a principal outstanding of 2,450. You've got a little bit of rounding there. That would be provided back to the county at closing. Again, so the total sources and uses there equalling at 2,520. And then you've got some information here. The bonds are going to be subject to 475 and 469. 469 is the statute that governs abatement bonds. So same as the original structure of the bonds there. Your security and source of repayment would be from annual tax abatement levies, so just as it is today. Your your bond counsel would be Taft. That name may sound a little bit new to the county board, as Briggs &amp; Morgan has previously worked as bond counsel. Briggs &amp; Morgan merged with Taft at the beginning of 2020. So same attorney, just a different firm name.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. She's I believe she may be overseas at the moment, but she is still a Taft back on Thursday. Paying agent would be US Bank. So they have served as your paying agent in the past, so nothing different there. You've got your preliminary debt service schedule on page three. And then finally, the page that's most likely of interest to the board is on page four. So this is the comparison here. So this gives you the the old debt service in the second column from the right versus what is new or the anticipated debt service, and then the savings comparison. So there's that 222, 45806, which is the estimated savings at this time. From there, there's just some additional, again, high-level detail. You've got a calendar on page seven, which really just outlines the remaining steps of the process. So of course, before you today for your consideration of that set sale resolution, we would be holding that rating call likely next week, with that rating being received by the 24th, sale being held on the 4th, the board considering the award on the 5th. And that would get you proceeds for you proceeds for November 9. The bonds are not callable until February 1st. So that being said, the proceeds would be delivered to the county. You'd make your regular 21 of 22 payment, and then you'd also pay off the remaining amount of the bonds, and then all you'd have left outstanding is the new 2021A series of bonds. I will conclude my comments there, but I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Questions?
Pretty cut and dried.
Pretty cut and dry.
Absolutely.
It's a savings.
Pretty well explained.
I'm glad we waited.
Yeah.
Yeah, good decision.
So your wishes here?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to authorize the set sale resolution to refund the 2014 tax abatement bonds.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in a second to set forth the authorization. Tax abatement bonds, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
We'll see you in about a month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready to move on?
Ready to move on.
Okay, great. So what you have here is a proposed agreement with Finley Engineering to do a feasibility study for broadband. We've already had some, quite a bit of interaction with Finley, with the broadband committee. Originally, we learned about them through Sherburne County. Sherburne has worked with them for quite some time, and they're doing some similar work for Sherburne, and a lot of good background in broadband and so on. I think our interactions with them so far have been very positive, and I think we've been impressed by their capabilities and background and so on. So basically, this study would help us identify areas of our county that are unserved or underserved for broadband, and thus could be eligible for us to use our ARPA funds in those areas. That's really important, to understand, again, the areas of the county that would meet the definition in the ARP Act for, to use these resources. So that's a big part of this. I think you may have gotten two copies of the contract and the proposal in your packet, but there's just, there's just one. Probably, it might be good to focus a bit on the deliverables, and I'm sorry that these pages are not numbered. But essentially, again, they're gonna, they're gonna do various, they're gonna use various techniques to help us understand the areas of the county that are unserved, underserved. They're gonna use surveys that will push out to as many people as we can possibly reach, and hopefully they'll do speed tests and so on, so we get the good data to understand, okay, again, what area is unserved or underserved. I think it's gonna take a concerted effort by all of us to help get those surveys out there in any way we possibly can. So they've already given us access to some sample survey instruments that we've been looking at. So hopefully, again, we'll get good data to understand where these resources can get used. The proposed cost of this is 51,750,000, and I perfectly acceptable to use our ARP resources for this study. I should mention, Amanda graciously applied for an initiative foundation grant of $10,000, which we have received. That'll help cover the cost. Also, too, in November, we can apply for a Blanden grant of 25,000 that could also possibly help cover this cost. So between those two, that would cover maybe two-thirds of the cost of the study. Not sure about the Blanden, but we do know we already have the initiative foundation grant, yeah. So Amanda did that for us.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Were we, I believe we were gonna utilize some of the township monies as well. It just hasn't got formalized. We have to...
Some discussions about that. I think that'd be a distinct possibility, sure.
Especially the ones that need it.
Mr. Chair, if I could expand on that, is that maybe is an item we could talk about at the annual township meeting coming up here at the end of the month? Get that on their agenda, and so that they're thinking of that.
Ask for some pledges, perhaps?
Yeah.
And also, Monty, just correct me if I'm wrong, but if this is approved, would be the first ARPA money that we'd actually be approving and spending at this point.
The first time we would be using ARP resources. I believe that's true. I can't recall anything at this point. We've dedicated the resources to...
So, Mont, this, or Jared and Scott, this was come through this committee? They recommended this?
I'm glad you asked. I should have mentioned it. The broadband committee did review this proposal and voted to recommend that the county board adopt it. Thank you for bringing that up.
Because I think we have good people on that committee. They have, they have a great plan. Yeah. And, but, as Monty said, it's gonna take a lot of, a lot of help from everybody on the board, all the townships, every, these speed tests are gonna be extremely important, even, even people in your area that have Betton Telephone. We need to prove what Betton Telephone is providing, because if, let's just say that they're only getting, you know, 10, 10 up and 3 down, or 10, 10, 10 down and 3 up, you know, that, that, there's room for them to improve there.
Yeah.
Whether that's paying more money to Betton Telephone or what, but it's, it's definitely a great plan.
So the highlight of that is, even if they have fiber, what do they have?
What do they have?
Let's find out what everybody has.
I kind of see that was in the proposal.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And the contract was reviewed by Michelle Meyer. It's got the big, him on the attend item. Actually, we used the Sherburne County agreement as a starting point, and then Michelle made a number of revisions which were acceptable to Finley Engineering, so the contract is in good shape.
Well, and as Monty said, there's a high possibility we've already received the 10, we may be getting an additional 25, and we may be getting some township money.
Yeah.
So I think it's...
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think this was actually done when all the townships were there, too, the ones that came when they did their proposal.
That's right.
That is true. You're right. We had the meeting at the Foley City Hall. There were a number of township folks there when Finley did their sort of initial, you know, proposal to us, initial review of ours, sort of broadband landscape. That's true, right. So they've had some exposure to Finley already.
And actually, we had very good township support there. Support isn't the word, showing up. They were there.
So, as we go, as we go forward, and we meet this, what is it, September 30th, when we're having the township meeting?
I don't recall the exact date. It's, it's like...
It's coming up soon.
September 30th.
Yeah.
Hopefully, that either Jared or Scott can get something proposed that, you know, kind of, you know, that, can you participate type deal?
I think that'd be nice, right?
And I grant that some, you know, not all the townships are there, and I'll, I'll, I'll talk to John Bembum to see if he can put a little extra notice out there to see if we can get a larger percentage of the townships there. Yes, if, if this is accepted today, maybe we can work with Finley to get us some deliverables that we could potentially hand out on, like, here are ideas and stuff like that, that we could go with.
I, I know that, is it Chris from Finley is eager to have the first kickoff meeting with the broadband committee to get the study going.
And even thinking aloud, maybe we'd like to have Chris there for a small presentation.
That would be really good.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the consulting services agreement with Finley Engineering for broadband feasibility study.
And I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made, and second it to approve the feasibility study with Finley Engineering for broadband study. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Okay, thank you. And now we get to commissioner meeting updates.
Mr. Chair, I can go.
Okay.
I had one, and that was, Mr. Commissioner Heinen and I went to the Sauk Rapids City Comprehensive Housing Study. That was very good. They kicked it off, and we'll be attending those as they come. That was back on August, I believe it was August 20th, August 20th, it was a Friday. I'm sorry, it was Thursday, 19th. But that was just, it was basically an hour and a half long, them going over their plan, going over what they're gonna do, and keep us, keep us moving forward on that.
Okay.
That was it. Was it, Scott?
Mr. Chair, I had two meetings, one tri-county solid waste with you, of course. It was a good for us, for me to be there in person. The first one I ever attended was online, so it was good to meet the other commissioners and some of the people that worked there. Some of the highlights that came out of that meeting, for me, we did have an update on ag plastic. We do know that as of last May, Waste Management basically quit hauling or supplying service to the eastern half of tri-county area, and our hope at this point is that West Central will step in and hopefully take up some of that slack in that area. We do have a scheduled tour, I believe, at the Pope Douglas plant, coming up in the end of November, November 18th. So I'm looking forward, hopefully, to be able to attend that, and that's also a time where we're gonna be looking at possibly, looking at a rate increase on their contract. As Mark said earlier, they're contracted through, I believe, 2031, so we're gonna be having some discussion in that area. One highlight that Tim, is it Boland? Why am I losing these? Yeah, that he brought out is that...
Oswald.
Oswald, thank you. 30% of the waste that is taken out is food, and I thought that really stood out as, like, wow, when you think of all the waste that people are throwing, 30% of it's food. And so there are some things in place where they're trying to, you know, recycle food product and that type of thing.
They're gonna impose that digester out at the...
Waste Water Plant?
At the Waste Water Plant. They've got a big-time grant for one- or three-year project to generate it to electricity. So that part's good. And I don't know, I got mixed feelings, I don't know about you, on that they're asking, you know, they have a 2% annual increase in the solid waste fee, and they're asking for a 2% on the 2%, so they're actually asking for a 4% increase next year with the counties.
There didn't seem to be a lot of...
No, it didn't seem to be a lot of, like, a contract's a contract, and some of the things I heard is that, you know, they've been doing a lot of work at Pope Douglas, and the Pope County has bonded significant amount of money to make this facility upgrade, and one of the other comments I heard is that, you know, they took the general manager from the one in Elk River, now he's general manager of the one in Pope Douglas, and we know where the one in Elk River went, you know, they went belly up, so.
It doesn't exist anymore. It'd be driven by their...
Yeah, it ain't even there, is it? So that was, been some of the comments that we've heard, that, you know, why did they hire him, you know, is, and I think that came from Tim, basically. So that was some of the things that we heard at, at this tri-county solid waste meeting. So I think it's gonna be a real, a real apprehensive meeting, because I think the Pope Douglas people are gonna come with the proposal, and the tri-county solid waste people are gonna be asked to vote on it right after they propose it. So I think that'll be...
We're trying to tie that to our tour.
Yeah, we're trying to tie that to our tour, so what happens if we don't approve it? I don't know what the outcome will be.
One last highlight from that meeting also, as we mentioned earlier, I talked to Mark about this public comment part. Sherburne, Sherburne before today was currently at that public comment portion, where Betton and Sterns were still in the process. Now, obviously, after today, Betton is in the, in the public hearing part of this, so not sure where Sterns is at. The only other thing I had was actually the same evening. Hopefully, Commissioner Shulung and maybe got some notes from this, but TriCap, I, we had a lot of technical problems that night. I was cut off three different times, and so I picked up very little from the meeting. So I actually, about two-thirds of it the way through, could not stay connected, and so I left it. So that's all I had the last two weeks.
Beth?
So, yep, I was on the TriCap meeting, and they just, see, that was, is that the one I was at? I can't remember, no, I didn't get out to Wake Park.
Yep.
There's, went through all their committees that, they, just an update on everything that they've been doing, getting their funding and working with all their projects, and they're doing a good job. No major big changes. The, let's see, I went to that farm tour and saw their, they have a area where they are testing for crops, and, and then they had this automated service for the cattle and for feeding. It's a pretty interesting setup, anyway. Consulent aging. They went through their financial statements, and everything seems to be on track, and they adjust things as they need to go, keep things moving, to provide all the services needed. They did their volunteer recognition, and were giving gift cards, and they had people come around and get some ice cream, and they had a good time recognizing everybody. They had their brat sales, their senior night at the Rocks, the, they had an event at Beaver Island, and the Whitney Center is open now. Things coming up, let's see, they have, having the St. Clair area cookie bake on 9/11. They're delivering cookies around, it looks like. They're much, pretty much all their businesses.
Okay.
And I think that's about it.
Okay, thanks, Beth.
Back on the 18th, we had an AMC extension committee on Zoom. Normally, they have this meeting in, at the state fair, over at the St. Paul campus, and because the university wouldn't allow in-person stuff, so they had it on Zoom. A lot of good things came about on what they're doing as far as, like, the drought and trying to make things available. We had several commissioners from the northwest part of the state that, like, wow, I mean, we got it bad, but they didn't have it near as bad as what they did up there. It seemed like that was probably the worst part, and some things that they're gonna move to go forward with on that part. So then, on the 25th, I met with the Soil and Water Board over here at Foley, was their board meeting. Basically, they had to discuss that, it was like, we got a comment period till the 13th on the draft for the Rum River 1 plan, and so we went through and, and picked out the things that we think need, need attention, that we don't like what's in the plan. One of them was that, back to Chris, it was to the ditch, you know, that they want, they, they're, they're set on having the, an overview on when we clean a ditch. I mean, and, you know, and so we're gonna, we're gonna go back, Jerry's gonna propose something, and we're gonna go back before the 13th and say that we don't care if they do it on private ditches, but not on county ditches, because we don't need another overview. We got everybody overviewing this already. That was one of the things we did. I did find, find their Soil and Water Board quite interesting, and I talked to Mr. Johnson. We'll have some discussion on that at the end of the year here, beginning of next year, and maybe doing something a little different there. And then on, we had BEP board meeting, and they virtually over, you know, looked over that proposal for extending that, and talked about the, the loan committee, things like that, and moving forward with some of the money that Amanda's trying to get in for, from the Initiative Foundation and that. And then looking at their membership, you know, their membership goes out here in October to get what they're gonna do. They're doing business retention and new business relief, and I think that, I can't think of her name right now, she's been out and about, the intern. And they also approved for her working...
Machello.
Machello for, I think she's gonna work so many hours a week after school. She had to go back to school here in September, so they approved funding her to work so many hours until she gets done with her graduate degree. And then she does have one more year to stay here on her visa from the time she... And then she does have one more year to stay here on her visa from the time she graduates, so more to come on that is what they had. And then, uh, on September first, they actually had an event for AMC at the state fair. It's the arts and talent stuff. It's really talented. I mean, these kids, they put on, we counted, they put on twenty-seven shows at the state fair during this, and they spend the first three days in preparation for practicing. And this year was all tied to construction, Chris. They had, everything was tied to construction. You know, it's a lot of, lot of singing, but they have, you know, they, they, they point out some of the soloists and why we should beware of construction zones in Minnesota in this time of the year. So it was really good. I, I thought about you when we were sitting there watching it, so. Um, there was a number of, a number of extension commissioners that were there at this one. So, and that was on, uh, September first. Uh, it started, well, that time it started wasn't too good, it was, um, four o'clock in the afternoon, and then they had, and then in turn, you got to go over and see the llama costume show at six thirty, seven o'clock. These, this is like way, I mean, the effort they put into this llama costume show is like way beyond what, I don't know how the, how the llamas actually allow this to happen, so. But they do. They must like it because it seems to be growing, and I was surprised they did it at the Coliseum, and I thought, boy, they're gonna be lost in there. But there was a large number of people that attended it to watch, even just off the street.
Probably was a little cooler in there.
Yeah, it was a little cooler in there, too, maybe that did it, so. And that was all that I had, so. Um, commissioner concerns? Anybody got any concerns that we need to record or talk about? Set committee of the holes?
I was gonna suggest having a committee of the hole to talk about space issues, but I'd hate to set a date and then it doesn't work for Commissioner Heinen. I think this is a course of really important discussion, probably all five board members should be there, so maybe you just bring this back on the twenty-first, and the idea there was to actually invite Better Johnson to sit down with you all on committee of the hole and just kinda brainstorm where we're gonna go with this space issue discussion.
Uh-huh, yep.
So, yeah, let's just wait if we can till the twenty-first when Commissioner Heinen is, is here. Other than that, I don't have any, anything new to add, so.
All right, okay. Um, so we have a ditch authority meeting?
We do.
So we will, we will.
Are we officially adjourned from county board?
Yep, we'll adjourn to the county board meeting then.
You hung in there, Jacob.
Thanks, Jacob.
Thanks, Jake.
You don't wanna talk about ditches yet?
Oh, I'd love to, you know, I just.
Good day.
Yeah, you too.
I'll call the, I'll call the Benton County Ditch Authority to order. Approve or amend the agenda?
I have no changes.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the agenda as presented. Second?
Motion's been made in second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carried. Approve or amend the minutes of Tuesday, June one meeting?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like to combine the minutes from the Tuesday, June first, twenty twenty-one, and the Tuesday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one minutes, uh, for approval. I'll second that.
Thank you for that. So we're gonna, I got a motion to approve June first and June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one minutes. Anybody have any discussion on that? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Update on redetermination benefits?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we talked at the last board meeting about possibly being able to set some public hearings at this meeting today. Uh, unfortunately, we're, I, I'll just say I, I'm not ready to do that. So, um, I did receive, uh, viewers' reports, uh, the day before I left, uh, for the, for the week. But, um, talking to the viewers on that day, though, um, some of the things that they are providing as part of that four dollars per benefited acre is sending out notices, mailing to all the landowners a landowner report. And what you see in the, the packet today is a sample of that. This is what's sampled from the last time we did redetermination of benefits, uh, on County Ditch thirteen. Um, a, and why we're not ready to set, um, those hearings yet is because they want to send these out, and I agree with that. The intent is they will create a report that looks just like this to each landowner, uh, in that benefited area of each particular ditch, have their name, their parcel ID, the quarter, quarter section, um, and then this area down here will below, uh, will describe their particular parcel, how many acres are in that tract, how many acres are benefited, because there, there may be, you know, they have a forty acre tract, but not all forty acres are benefited, and so on and so forth. And each landowner will receive this report in advance of having a landowner meeting. And so talking to the viewers, what they'd really like to do is have these landowner meetings outside of a public meeting, um, so they can have the opportunity to talk to the viewers and say, hey, I know that's what you looked at, and that's how the ground flows, but maybe, maybe they tiled their land sometime in the history and land, and the water kinda moves this way. And that gives the viewers the opportunity to adjust, if necessary, each individual landowners. And then the point, uh, would be after that point, we'll set the public hearing. And if all goes well with those landowner meetings, we, we may have little to no public comment at that point. So I will continue working on that with the, the landowners. Um, and then, um, we'll be able to set a public, we'll have to, actually, set a public hearing date before those landowner meetings, just due to the, the notification requirements in statute. But we haven't scheduled that, those landowner meetings as of yet. Um, I anticipate this week I will get through my, my process of reviewing, um, uh, their, their reports. Basically, what I've gotten is spreadsheets of all the different parcels, the landowner names, how many acres and tract. I need to do some review of those, and for one, what I wanna do is see if there's any land sales that have occurred in the time that we, we gave them this GIS information time, because that, that happened on these ditches here, thirteen and fifteen. Um, we had some sales, and then new landowners didn't realize that this process was going on, they get an assessment and say, what, why do I have to pay more in taxes? So I wanna make sure that for one, um, and then, but I, I hope to get through that this week and then move forward with scheduling that landowner meetings. So I'll be working with them and, and working on finding a spot and location to have those meetings. Um, and the kinda idea, I think you're welcome to come, but we won't set that as a board meeting, so there won't be public comment and, and, um, media won't necessarily be there, not that we're trying to hide anything. We'll have that public meeting after we have those individual landowner meetings, but, uh, according to viewers and according to others that I've talked to, those usually worked well. When, when the landowners feel like they had a input into the process, the public hearings that come after have gone, uh, very well, so.
Chris, on those, on those landowner meetings, so will they combine a couple ditches, or do they have to do each ditch individually?
No, that was the idea, um, and that's how they prefer to, is to combine them, so they're not having to schedule multiple dates.
Because of the number of ditches we do, are they going to have two, three meetings, or are they gonna try doing them all at once?
I, I think they would like to do them all at once. I think that's a lot to accomplish. We've got a lot of landowners. I think we should break it up over two or three and combine two or three ditches at a time and do that, probably in the same geographical region, try to combine those kinda ditches. Because a lot of times you may be impacting a couple, same landowners, you know, far, some larger farmers, they may be on both, multiple ditches, so kinda do those together. They can answer their question.
I guess that would be my suggestion.
Yep, I would agree.
Yeah, so that's what I'll continue working on. We did come across some, a couple issues I just wanna point out. Um, one of them was on County Ditch fourteen in Oak Park. Looking at the GIS data, we had some issues where we had some parcel overlaps, and so the viewers couldn't complete their report until we figured out what was going on here, and this is just one example. Um, we have this parcel here that is contained completely within the, the parcel boundaries of this parcel ID, a, and then there's another parcel in here, and we had to figure out what was going on, and it goes back to, uh, the old railroad was involved. It looked like there was a deed transfer to the Creamery when they, when the railroad didn't actually have the deed, and it'd already been deeded back to MinDOT, but that took a little bit of time. I, I employed the services of our county surveyor to look into that, just because they're, they're experts at reading legal descriptions and finding deeds and stuff, and that's what we found. There was even, um, a southern states power company that was, ended up being bought out by NSP, which, you know, now operates as Excel Energy was in here. We had to get this straightened out and find out who was the actual deed title owner of this property, so we make sure we assess them. Um, because MinDOT does receive a benefit from County Ditch fourteen in, in this area, so that was one of the things that, that held up ditch fourteen a little bit longer. Uh, and then ditch three is still taking a little bit longer because it's, it's more urban as opposed to agricultural, so they're having to look at the storm sewer information and, um, analyze that a little bit different than, than agricultural land. There's a lot of landowners in ditch three that'll help, uh, offset the cost of that. Uh, so those, those two ditches, I don't have reports, uh, uh, back yet, but, um, we should be able to get those here, here shortly. So I just wanted to at least talk about ditches, even though we're not ready to set public hearings as of yet, I just wanted, uh, talk about that. We still are working on it, um, and hopefully we'll be able to set those soon.
Mr. Chair, Chris, do they give you any kinda indication how many people attend their landowner meetings?
Um.
I mean, are you have any kind of expectation whatsoever?
Yeah, I know thirteen and fifteen, when we did those, we, here, we, it seemed like we got quite a few, but that was because that was the first time that had been talked about in Benton County in a number of years. I don't think we'll have as much turnout now, um, because we've gone through it. We've been talking about ditches for a couple years, I think, um, I honestly don't know. They, they, you mean.
Does a landowner have the opportunity to meet with H two O separately before landowner meetings? I mean, they're gonna get this report, right?
Yeah.
In the mail? And then if I call up H two O and say, hey, I, you know, I'd like to talk to you about this, do they say, well, we're gonna have landowner meetings, or do they talk to me about it?
Well, I think that, I think they wanna, they're gonna put in that letter, come to this meeting on this date and time and talk to us then.
Okay.
Um, and then after that, if there's additional conversation needed, they'll, they'll have that, because there, there may very well be if there's some things have changed.
So the whole point is we don't get bombarded at public hearings, that stuff gets figured out beforehand.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah. That's the idea is that, yeah, we come to the public hearing, we have a viewers' report that's good and solid and ready to be accepted and not go back to the viewers at that point.
Right, okay.
And the other part I think that has helped is that, you know, we did a couple of ditches and things went well. And so now, you know, and word travels that, oh, yeah, they, you know, that was real, the county did a good job on that. Prior to that, I think there was skepticism.
I think that's a good point, because there's some goodwill there, and I wanna make sure we don't mess that up.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the benefit is a couple ditches that we, uh, like ditch six and ditch nine and three, we have that, uh, engineering initial report done. Um, the construction plan should go relatively quick, and actually, I have the, I reached out to our consultant, uh, Houston Engineering already start working on those. So after we accept the viewers' report, um, we should be ready to advertise for bids for a repair project shortly after that. I mean, we'll have to accept the viewers' report and then actually do an action to order the repair at that point, but those conceivably could happen at the same meeting after we have the public hearing, so.
And which ditches, again, would you consider would be the first ones?
Uh, my preference would be ditch six first. Yeah, that's because we started working on that, uh, and then ditch three and nine could happen after that, too.
Okay.
And those because we have repair petitions on those.
Right.
Uh, to request those. And remember, fourteen actually came before nine, but then when we talked about fourteen, we realized at nine, you know, drains into nine, we should get the downstream cleaned out first.
Cleaned out first, mm-hmm.
So.